All right. Good evening. Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Lunenburg Select Board. If you wouldn't mind being seated, again, good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting, the Lunenburg Select Board. Today is Tuesday, March the 26th. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. In accordance to the requirements of the meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, on Facebook Live and the public access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube Channel after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. We're to begin tonight with public comments from the board. Do we have any public comments this evening from the board?
I do. So I want to address some comments that have come up recently at various committee meetings past few weeks. I want to say, first of all, I believe that the process of this year's budget season has been transparent. It's certainly not smooth nor pretty, but it's a process. It needs to adapt as numbers are confirmed and the unknowns become known. This budget season started with more unknowns than usual. And a lot of lines in the preliminary budgets are based on estimates because we simply don't know the information at the start. And creating these initial estimates is a really tricky thing, right? Because if your estimates are too high, you end up having to come back and make cuts, which is not pleasant for anybody. So I think the town manager has the experience that allows her to make knowledgeable decisions regarding these initial estimates. Think back to last year, although it wasn't a direct budget line item or budget-related. Think back to how the money was transferred to the overlay account to cover the property tax abatements. That estimate ended up being pretty spot-on, and the town was able to pay out over a million dollars in abatements last year without an override. I don't know how many towns could have been positioned to absorb such an unexpected hit like that. Secondly, I'm not aware of anything that transpired this budget season that points to any intentionally shift or any plans to intentionally shift an unfair financial burden onto one particular department. I've had several discussions over the last month with the town manager, the school committee chair, superintendent, to learn about the various budget line items and to brainstorm at how to close the gap to the schools, what we're calling the needs-based budget. Every single one of them expressed optimism in being able to close that gap, and I honestly feel that they and several others on the various committees shared that goal, and were all pulling in the same direction. And as a result of many of the unknowns finally becoming known, a lot of discussions, a lot of number crunching by a lot of people, that initial 549,000 gap to the needs-based budget has been closed. Now, we've closed that gap in what some people might consider a bit of an unconventional way, using ARPA funds, but the point is that the collective "we" found a way to move and work together to move forward towards a solution, and I think we shouldn't lose sight of that. So while the gap has been closed, the school department, as well as other departments in town, have budgets that are still under significant strain this year, which is why the Prop 2.5 override has been brought forward by the school committee. Now, Prop 2.5 override is something that causes a lot of what we'll call robust discussion, and that shouldn't surprise anybody because it's not like we're trying to decide on what color to paint the library. We're asking people to open their wallets to pay more money on their property tax, or through an increase in their property tax, I should say. So there's no right or wrong answer. There are very passionate people with strong opinions on both sides of the override question, and it's a very personal decision for every voter. So I firmly believe that no matter what happens regarding the override, whether it passes or not, our work is not done. There are many departments in town with needs. We have operating and capital budget needs. We need to address salaries. We have projects that will require borrowing, and I can go on and on. These things won't go away. They won't go away if we ignore them, and they're not going to get any easier if we delay addressing them. The only way to make progress and to move forward in the best, most responsible way we can is to do that together. Now, I'm not saying after town meeting we all have to get together for a group hug because we all know, no matter what happens, there are going to be people who are happy and people who are not happy. But no matter the outcome, when the dust settles, we have to be able to commit to work together to address the issues in town. We cannot have an us-versus-them mentality. If we want to successfully address the issues that lie ahead, we need to be able to have difficult discussions, make difficult decisions, and make compromises to identify a longer-term holistic plan for the town that we can all support. So let's be careful with the words we use and accept there will be times that people will need to agree to disagree, and we have to be okay with that and willing to continue working together in order to make progress. So toward that end, I'm going to formally submit an action item for the select board's first meeting after the town elections, which I think is May 21st, to discuss the formation of a task force that consists of representatives from all the key stakeholders to explore the big picture in longer-term view of the financial situation across the town. I strongly believe that we need to begin this effort as soon as possible so it can be part of the next budget season. Thank you.
Thank you, Selectman Emke. Your comments are appreciated. Do you have any other public comments from the board?
I do. So I want to, much of what I was going to say was already said by my fellow select board member, Emke, but I will add to that just one thing. I remember in this town when there was a big division and the us-versus-them that Ms. Emke alluded to actually existed, and it took many years of working together to make sure that we could become unified again. And so it's really painful to watch commenters in a time of certainly passionate opinions not talk about the issues and resolving them so much as casting aspersions on motives of other people, looking to assign blame, and all those things that drive people apart and make the solutions harder than easier. I mean, they're never easy to begin with in conditions like this. They do say that extraordinary conditions don't create character, they expose it, and I think that's what we've seen in some regards, and it's not helpful. And you want to tell the people who are doing this that it's not helpful. I hope they know who they are, and it should be apparent that we should all work against the notion that there are two sides and that we're not a unified town. I don't, for one moment, close my eyes to the fact of what the financial situation that's in front of us, but pitting ourselves against each other certainly doesn't help. And taking shots at leadership is one thing. You want to publicly assail appointed and elected officials, that's one thing, but when you take aim at employees who are doing everything they can and spending every hour that they can, coming up with solutions and running over numbers and numbers and numbers and scenarios, and yet those are the people that are pointed out as villains, and almost using that word, those are not helpful. So I would hope that we would refocus on getting to the solution, short-term and long-term, taking advantage of, I think, an excellent proposal by Ms. Emke to start a task force and really focus our energies on getting through these next few weeks and these budgets with the questions and the articles and the ballot questions in front of us, and really work on a solution and not on division. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alonzo. Your comments are also very much so appreciated.
On a very unrelated note, I just want to say thank you. I know that having a selectman via Zoom is not ideal, and everyone was very patient with my remote participation, and I also want to thank everyone who personally reached out to me over the five months expressing support and words of encouragement. It made my experience a lot easier, so I'm very grateful. Thank you again, and I'm excited to be here in person and to get back in the swing of things. So thank you.
Thank you, Selectman.
I didn't come prepared to address any of what, and welcome back, Caesar. It's good to have you. What Ms. Emke and Mr. Alonzo said, but I will just add on, I mean, that I totally endorse the comments by both of them, and particularly over these last four or five weeks, the work of the, there's been a lot of cross-pollination. Finance committee members have been attending and tuning into select board meetings and school committee meetings. School committee meetings, same to the other two committees, select board, finance, and school committee. A lot of people working very, very hard, all people of goodwill, all of them, regardless of where they've come out on these different positions. This is a ton of work, and I have to say, just in terms of the comments, I mean, people that have been in the fight, and I do commend the people that came forward and, as a general, and really came out and fought for something that they were passionate about and thought and think is important, and I agree that it is important, but I kind of was struck when I saw people saying, "You've been at this for six weeks," you know, and saying, "I'm exhausted. I've been at this six weeks." Do that 52 weeks a year. That's school committee, finance, select board, and it does get more and less intense at times, but every member of all of these and other boards too, and committees, but every member of all three that I just named work very, very hard and dedicate themselves to this town and give of their time, and, I mean, not to complain, I'm not complaining, and speaking for myself, when I own my own business, a ton of earnings over the last three years, tons given up. And so we're not only not getting paid, we're paying, in many cases, to be here. Next, what I was going to say. Sorry, wrong sheet. I want to thank everyone who did step forward to run for or an office at caucus. I'm going to repeat what I reiterate, what I say almost every year, so I do commend everybody who stepped up. The one thing I found disappointing, and I always find disappointing, is zero contested seats. I hate that. I really do, and I'll go into my refrain, my chorus that I say every time. Every seat at every level should be contested every time, and I would be saying that if I were running. The people on this board know that. And, you know, getting back to Mr. Alonzo's commenters, there are a lot of commenters out there, and many of them are very constructive, like the core group that organized, very, very constructive people, but there are a lot of on the fringe and everything. There's a world of commenters, but when it comes time to step up and put your hat in the ring and run for something, it's crickets. So I'm just asking, you know, I mean, it might be too late for this cycle, maybe somebody will be inspired to pull nomination papers or run a write-in campaign. It's just, it's not healthy to not have contested seats, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. My comments. You know, this morning, when I went outside and I saw the hostas starting to break surface, you know, I was reminded that spring is in the air, that this is an opportunity for us to, you know, kind of find renewal in our lives. And there are a lot of things, I think, and my comment today is, I encourage all who can hear me, you know, while we may have tensions and challenges in front of us, to reflect on all the many things in our lives for which we should be grateful. You know, there's a lot of good relationships, you know, there's a lot of good marriages out there. Many people are happy in their employment, they feel a certain peace in their lives, and, you know, each day, I tell my nephews, each day is an opportunity to have the best day of your life. And, you know, that's kind of how I approach my own existence, and, you know, while we work through our challenges, as has been articulated today, and concerns, to not lose sight of why we are even in this conversation to begin with, which is that there's so much in our existence and in our lives for which we are grateful, that we want to, in many cases, maintain that, continue that. So let's be mindful of the positives that we encounter every single day in our lives. And do we have any, that's it? Do we have any public comments from the public? If I may start with Mr.?
I have one.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm going to ask the town manager. Any public comments from the town manager?
I do.
Thank you.
And I did not know what Selectman Emke and Selectman Alonzo were going to say tonight. I wrote this on my own. I would like to address public comments made at last week's finance committee meeting. First, I want to say I'm very cognizant of the fact that when you are in a public position, especially the position of town manager, it is expected that you will receive occasional criticism and need to have a thick skin. I consider myself an even-tempered and thick-skinned person after almost two decades as a municipal employee. However, my comment tonight is to respond to what I believe was an attack on my character and called into question my integrity and how I have approached the budget, including that the chairman and I orchestrated this outcome from the beginning, and that the position the school is in is of my making. Am I responsible for school transportation costs rising, for out-of-district placement costs increasing, that SIR funds are sunsetting, that health insurance costs everywhere are rising? Am I the reason that towns across the state are having overrides? I respect that everyone has an opinion. What people may not know about me is how much I value education and understand the critical impact it has on the lives of our residents and the impact it has on attracting people to relocate here. Some of the most beloved people in my life are educators. My mother worked as a paraprofessional for 30 years. Three of my closest aunts were teachers and won a superintendent, and my closest friends in the teaching profession. When I graduated grad school and needed a job, I worked in eighth grade as a behavioral problem teacher. I have school and town government in my blood. To insinuate that I have put the school in this position is inflammatory and doesn't acknowledge how much cooperation and collaboration there has been to get us to this point. The superintendent, the school committee chair, the select board chair, and I have been meeting or communicating weekly. The discussions were all in good faith, and everyone's objective was to work together to get to the needs-based budget. As a result, the gap between the preliminary budget and the needs-based budget has been closed. This, to me, is a demonstration that we can work together to resolve problems. This issue was solved through collaborative leadership. The budget process is an evolution. When you start the budget process for the following year, there are many unknowns that unfortunately are not known until much later in the process, such as state aid, health insurance, our retirement assessment, the money tech assessment, and this year, we had a mid-year surprise of losing 40S funding that impacted our state aid. Most of these items are dictated by timeframes we have no control over, and we have to navigate and conservatively budget accordingly. But such things, like the sudden loss of 342,000 in state aid, is unanticipated and impacts how the budget develops. However much you plan, there will always be unexpected items during the budget process that will affect the outcome. Part of the process is as well as asking questions and vetting out the best use of our limited resources. The narrative that is put out there should not be one to cast blame and make attacks on one's character. To be put on the record, I certainly did not orchestrate this outcome or collude with the chairman and find it offensive that is the narrative being spun. The school department is one of many departments within the town, and my approach will always be trying to balance the needs of all town departments and school department. Working together, we can solve these issues by not falling victim to words that create divides.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any public comments, Mr. Passios?
Dave Passios, 56 Whiting Street. First thing I'd like to say, if we were in British Parliament the last 20 minutes, the galley would be saying, "Hear, hear." So thank you for your comments, those previous comments. Before you, as I mentioned during, at the end of the non-appointment hearing a week or two ago for the cemetery commission, I apologize, the packet is not put together the way I had hoped. I couldn't get my hands on the 1979 articles and their wordings, but I did have a conversation with town council yesterday on this and half a dozen other things too. Basically, what we kind of came up with for a conclusion was that Article 21 in 1979 created, and this is a repeat, and I'll do it as quick as I can, this is sort of a repeat from what Mr. Alonzo reported, created the commission and called out Chapter 40, Chapter 40, Section 8D as being the chapter it was created under. And I apologize, I don't have, your packet does not have those. 8D is at the bottom of the third page in its entirety, and what we've done since the beginning of this committee being created is cherry-picked this section and, I think, created many of the problems like we have with other sections of our charter and bylaws in that they contradict either mass general law or they contradict themselves or whatever. It came down to basically if the section, if Section 8D has not changed since 1979, we already accepted it in 1979. Yes, we have made some modifications to the number of members of the committee, which is allowed in there because it left a range, but the section today, if it's still the same as it was back then, does speak to alternate members, and it also mentions town manager being the one to select and then the select board ratifying. That's covered in one of the, I think it's the 2008, where it says the members will continue to be appointed by the select board. I think that covers that little piece there. My proposal is one of two things. Either we clarify whether or not the section has changed since it was accepted in '79, in which case we already have a mechanism for alternate members because we accepted the entire paragraph, or town council suggested a cleaner way would be to add the acceptance of this section in its entirety into the article for town meeting. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Passios. Do we have any other public comments this evening? I think someone over to the right was Ms. Lincoln.
Thank you. Debbie Lincoln, 46 Hemlock Drive. I am absolutely heartbroken to be here tonight because I promised myself with everything you've been through that I would never come here with anything negative, and I first want to thank you all for all the hard work you've done on this budget process. I cannot imagine what it's been like for you these last few months. It's been horrible, and I totally appreciate all the work you've been through. Thank you so much. But I found out this afternoon that the request from the Council on Aging for $6,648.42 to make a 19.5-hour employee to a benefited 24-hours has been removed from the budget. And I just feel as though I, as the COA chairman, I just have to make a comment about that. With health insurance, if she should take it, which I really doubt she would, that would be an additional $22,000. We have been getting the short shrift for a long time. When we had our patio, it came back with the lowest bid, and the pavilion was removed, the sod was removed. If you've been back there, it's a beautiful, beautiful sight, but it would not be if we had not had a donation of the pavilion and the sod. It would be cement and mud. It's a beautiful spot, not just for seniors but for the whole town. We can have all kinds of events there. We've been relying on donations and the goodwill of folks for our Lunenburg Adult Activity Center for a long time, and I felt that this ask was very reasonable. We tightened our belts. We did not ask for anything that we did not really need. It was proposed that we ask for some additional hours from part-time people. That wasn't a reasonable request. We really needed this person to become a benefited employee to help out our seniors for their lunch program. I am heartbroken that this was taken out of the budget. I am imploring you to please try to find a way to make this work. The suggestion was that we approach this again in November. I will be heartbroken if you can't find a way to make this work. I'm imploring you to please go back and see if you can find $6,648 for our seniors, one-third of our population. This is a home, away from home, where people can come and have gourmet lunches for $5 from a super chef. I promised you I would not come here with anything negative. So again, I want to thank you for all the hard work. I understand that this is a terrible process for people to go through, but this is not very much money, and I'm sure we can find a way to make this work. Please do that. These are important people. This is one-third of our population, and they deserve this, and they deserve your consideration. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Lincoln, for that comment. As we, we will discuss this later in the agenda, I want to clarify that when we offer benefit positions, whether or not the employee takes the benefit, we have to allocate the funding of the benefit, and so the request would be for the 28, 648. Do we have any other public comments? This, Sybil?
I'm not sure if any of those opening remarks were directed at me or not, but regardless, I'm here to represent the group known as Save Our Schools Lunenburg. We formed a legit ballot campaign committee, as most of you know. I'd appreciate it if you would call us out or talk directly if that's what these opening comments were. I'm here to read the statement that we submitted publicly on social media, on our website, and to many leaders within town government. So these are on behalf of the group and not my personal comments, however, I do endorse them. Lunenburg friends and neighbors, the past few weeks have been a whirlwind. We thank those who analyzed spreadsheets, attended committee and town meetings, wrote to our elected officials, and asked questions of each other. We've accomplished a tremendous amount in a brief period of time. When drastic cuts to our school district were announced in January, many passionate people were activated, and many, I add, with many children and full-time jobs. With the support of residents, we attempted to understand and advocate for the best possible outcome. A Prop 2.5 override became the logical solution. Since January, the town manager and members of the select board found additional, albeit one time, sources of revenue. Adjusting the school budget from a 2.5% increase to a 5.4% increase is a monumental effort, and that was achieved over the course of the last few months. And yet, the budget remains in deficit with 20 staffing cuts still planned for FY '25, as far as we know. No other town department faces such debilitating shortfalls. Through this process, we've learned that other town departments are also struggling to make ends meet, as we just heard. To fill staffing positions, to offer competitive wages, in order to attract and retain talented employees, we've heard various committees mention the need to broaden the override to and to include cross-depart, departmental needs, and have the override be inclusive, not just for the schools, but for the entire town. There are additional concerns that the current schools-only override won't have long-term impact, as it cannot comprehensively address future financial shortfalls. Our grassroots campaign to promote an override, a ballot campaign committee known as Save Our Schools Lunenburg now recognizes that this year's override does not have the fundamental cross-departmental support and collaboration from our town, from our leadership, that it would need to succeed. We urge our town and its residents to continue working together to build a comprehensive assessment of fiscal needs for all town departments, including our schools. It is our firm belief that the town boards prefer FY '26 to be the year Lunenburg confronts its budgetary shortfalls, both within the school department and throughout all our town departments. We believe that alignment in this effort is the best way forward for our group as SOS Lunenburg supports the immediate creation of an override task force to research, analyze, and share Lunenburg's comprehensive budgetary situation and to provide actionable recommendations, consisting of, at a minimum, representatives from the Select Board, school committee, stakeholders from other town departments, finance committee, and SOS Lunenburg. The task force should engage all town departments, documenting their actual operational needs and core funding obstacles. This collaboration would offer holistic solutions to save money, consolidate expenses, find competitive service providers, and ultimately, understand if an override is needed, and if so, what the scope and details of that override must be. We do sincerely thank everyone who has devoted their time and effort into moving the needle for our kids, and we look forward to your continued involvement in the discourse over the course of the next year. We are eager to begin a town-wide collaborative budget planning process and believe it is the correct strategy with the highest chance of success for Lunenburg. Our most sincere thanks, TJ Loughlin, Chairman, Mandy Gilman, Treasurer, Sybil Kaufman, Member, Shoshana Mulay, Member, Anastasia Grady, Member, and all of our SOS supporters at large. Thank you.
Thank you for the public comment. Do we have any other public comments this evening?
Hi, I'm Shoshana Mulay. I live at 139 Cove Road. I got involved with the school budget process to support the music program in Lunenburg Public Schools, and since then, I've attended dozens of public meetings and learned a great deal about municipal finance. Since January, engaged citizens, including students, parents, and community members, have accomplished a tremendous amount, as was stated, the proposed 2025 school budget is now, we'll say, 5% above the 2024 budget, instead of 2.9% above. Based on what I heard during those meetings and in discussions with other concerned citizens, it's clear that the town's finances need a review. This process will help us to understand if an override is needed, and if so, what the scope and details of that override must be. My family has lived in Lunenburg since 2010, and like most middle-class families, our home is our biggest asset. In order to preserve the value of that asset, Lunenburg needs to use revenue from property taxes and all other available funding sources wisely. To this end, I support the creation of the Task Force Budget Committee, however we're going to term it, to analyze the operating and capital budget process and decide which services gets funded and how we fund them. Thank you to everyone who has devoted their time and effort to moving the needle. I look forward to everyone's continued involvement in the discourse over the next year. Please consider coming to the meeting that we're hosting tomorrow night at 7:00 at the library so that we can move forward together. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have any other public comments this evening from the public? Does the board wish to make any additional public comments this evening?
I will say just one thing, because the question was posed, if my personal comments were directed at your organization, and the answer is no.
Thank you. I should say mine weren't either.
I appreciate it.
Neither were mine.
Yeah. I will just say that I did call out your group and said that I commend the core group, so I did call you out.
Thank you.
I said it's people on the fringes, and they're the usual suspects, people you probably weren't even aware of, but we've been aware of for years. They're very constructive.
And my comment was about spring and being positive, and I think that was applicable to everyone, but it wasn't targeted. But thank you for the question. Thank you for the question, Sybil. I think it's important for members of the board to be very direct as we speak and make public comments, and I think that the comments this evening were very direct, but they were just not directed in your direction.
Thank you for clarifying.
All right. Okay, so we're going to go now to any announcements we have this evening.
I do have an announcement due to issues that we've been having with Munis for tax bills. They will be going out beyond the last day of March. They're being actively worked on with staff and Tyler Technologies, who owns Munis. So they're resolving issues, but there's a process that needs to be followed to get to each different step of the billing process.
So I know you and I had talked about this before tonight. Would you mind just giving some clarity on what exactly the problem is? Because everything was done, so what's the problem with the printout?
So everything couldn't be officially done until the new values were accepted at the tax classification hearing on March 12th. So after the tax rate was set, that was submitted the following day. That gets certified, then those valuations are firm. Then the assessors work with Vision, who is the Kama software system, because there's a download that needs to be done and bridged over to our accounting software to create the tax bills. So during that process, there were errors coming up with different codes and parcel IDs that needed to be dived deeper into. Vision was phenomenal in their customer service. They were very responsive in all of the requests for additional files and to fix the fixes that were needed. So also, a patch was needed for Munis to make things run smoother on that end. So right now, everything's in the training module, but every time an issue occurs, it needs to be, the training start over, it needs to be refreshed, and the patch needs to be done again. So it's just a process-oriented thing that needs to be gone through until all the errors are resolved.
So the summary is it's a software issue, and we're working with the company who created and designed the software to resolve the issue?
Yes. Right. So whatever date, the final date, they get billed out or mailed out by the printing company, it's 30 days thereafter that they're due.
Mr. Chair.
Of course. If I may add to that, I want to be clear, because of the events of the last 12 months, number one, the Board of Assessors and our assessing company got the data completed in time, so it is not on them. It is the handshake between our Kama system that has all the data of all the property cards, handing it off to our billing company that does the printing through Munis. That is where the problem is. We've had problems with sewer billing with our Munis system, as have our neighboring cities of Leominster and Fitchburg, and so while the Town Manager is not in a position, or is too polite to say, Vision had excellent customer support. Tyler Technologies, not so much. So that is what we are focusing on. We are aware of the problem, as she said, but I wanted to be clear where the issue is, and we are aware of it, and we are trying to address it as best we can. Obviously, we're not going to be ripping out our accounting system anytime soon, so we have to go forward, and we are reliant on them to work with us to fix the problem, and that's where we are right now.
All right. Thank you. Any additional announcements?
No.
All right. We should probably make some room for Mr. Costa.
Hasn't even taken off his coat. He's like he's waiting for a quick exit.
All right. So we are joined this evening. Next on our agenda, we're going to our 7:05 appointment. So next on our agenda is our discussion with Town Council on the annual town meeting warrant articles and Proposition 2.5 override ballot questions. So Adam Costa is Town Council. Is Adam going to stay at that end of the table? Okay.
Well, usually we kind of hate to be in here for consulting or...
Usually, but I think we'll manage. We'll just cross-talk. So we're joined by Adam Costa, who's Town Council. Thank you, Adam, for being with us this evening, and I know you were running a little bit late, but you ended up being very early.
I'm sorry.
For which one?
Right.
All right. And then we will, in sequential order, get to our next two meetings with the Personal Committee Representative and Planning Board Representative. Just to confirm with Personnel and Planning Board, did you guys post meetings for tonight, either one of you? I didn't think you did, but I just want to confirm. Okay, so we can get to you. Okay, great. All right, so do you want me to introduce this, or do you want to introduce this?
We asked Attorney Costa to be here tonight because there's been a variety of questions surrounding the override, the process, what-if scenarios, so to entertain those questions from the board and walk through that process and any potential occurrences that may happen at town meeting, and the response and the ballot question, and how that would impact the ballot.
Okay. So, Adam, I don't know if you want to just take it from there, or if you want us to kind of go through the questions and ask them to you.
So I'm really happy to do either. I've had multiple conversations, not just with Heather, but with town administrators and town managers in a lot of communities. I've been referring to 2024 as the year of the override. I'm sure some of those who are watching or who are in attendance have seen some of the news stories. You know, there was a, there was a town meeting in town of Westford just the other night, drew 1,600 people. They had to postpone it, and they're now holding it in May at the football field. So it's, this is a common occurrence in many communities. So Heather and I have had many conversations about Proposition 2.5 in a general sense, about the concept of an override, about the sequencing of override versus ballot question versus town meeting action, or vice versa, and about the various contingencies that can occur depending upon one passing, the other failing, and the sequence in which that might occur. So I can get into all those particular nightmare scenarios if you'd like, or I can defer to you and the specific questions that the board might have about that process.
Yep, no, so I will, Lou, need to share an iPad with you this evening. Mine appears to be dead. So I think the first is that we have some language here, and let me just, I'm sorry, Lou.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Let me just open up myself. Thank you. All right. Let me just get to, so what I want to do is just get to the specific language that we have and just confirm that our language is correct. Why am I blinking here? This is March. Okay. Let me just get there. No. Why am I? Just give me one moment here to pull this up. Which number is the override question?
It should be, I don't know, on top of the top of my head.
All right. I apologize for those in the room and those at home for the technical delays. Do we know which number this article is? Yeah, and the warrant?
It's a letter.
What, a letter?
And it's H.
H. So the first, Mr. Costa, I think that we want clarity on is in the proposed language that we have, and I understand that you've worked with the Town Manager on this, but we want to first confirm that the language that we are using in here, and we're going to plug in first to clarify, we did receive a revised number from the Chair of the School Committee in the amount of $948,000.136. So again, 948, 136. So as it currently reads, "H to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate an additional sum of money," and I'll read it as written, "an additional sum of money to supplement the Lunenburg Public Schools' operating budget for fiscal year 2025, contingent upon the passage of a Proposition 2.5 ballot question or take any other action relative thereto." So the first question is, we know that this, that the language as written in Mass General Law is very specific. Can you confirm with us, Adam, that, excuse me, Attorney Costa, that the language as written here tonight is appropriate, and would you recommend any modifications such as the inclusion of the specific dollar amount?
So you're right in saying that Mass General Laws are very specific, but they're very specific to ballot questions. So, and I see that maybe some of you are looking at the same reference that I am. It's the best reference that exists. It's the state reference with respect to Proposition 2.5, but it's actually that the title of the guidance document is Proposition 2.5 Ballot Questions, and the focus is entirely on ballot questions, and very little is said about town meeting action. Well, that's because the statute is very specific about the ballot question, about the sequence in which the ballot question, the ballot question might occur, about what happens if there's a passing versus a failing of that ballot question, and in the actual statute itself, the explicit language of the ballot question is included, and you have no real option to alter or vary or modify that language, except filling in the particulars, like the name of your town, the purpose for which the override is occurring, and the dollar amount of their override. But otherwise, the form of the question is prescribed by statute. When it comes to town meeting warrant articles, there is no prescription of specific language within Massachusetts General Laws. And so there are multiple different approaches, and this is something that the Town Manager and I discussed going back several weeks ago, how it could be done. And there's no single right way to do it. I suppose there are wrong ways to do it, but I've seen communities that have chosen to adopt an override as part of a single warrant article, where when you are viewing your traditional budget, where you've got your segments, and you've got your departments within each segment, and you've got your dollar amounts for each, you can have an additional column that runs alongside that that would show the additional appropriation that would occur in the event that the override vote passes at the ballot box. That's one approach. Another approach, but the risk that exists in that instance is you need to be very specific within the language of the motion and the vote on that warrant article that is going to be adopting your omnibus budget, that you're adopting the baseline budget, the first column, and that you're only adopting the second column, or sometimes the third column, if you have multiple ballot questions, one funding the schools, one funding the town, whatever the case may be. I have one in another community where there were multiple schools, a regional technical district, and then a regional school district. You've got to be very specific in the language of your motion that you're approving the budget, and you're only approving those contingencies in the event that the question passes at the ballot box. Otherwise, you risk leaving town meeting without having approved a budget, which is problematic. You'll need to convene again to approve the budget. Another approach is to avoid maybe some of that confusion that might exist for some readers of the warrant, and simply take the contingencies, whether they be individual contingencies or a single contingency aligned with the overrides, and put those into separate warrant articles. So you adopt an omnibus budget like you always would, and then the subsequent warrant article would be to appropriate an additional sum of X or Y or Z to fund the following additional services, and you would then list what those additional items would be, essentially the second column that you would have had if had you gone with the first option. And then you could have an additional warrant article if you're having a second ballot question for a second override for a different purpose. So either of those approaches works. You've just got to be very careful that it's crafted appropriately and that the motion is drafted also appropriately, so that you're sure that you leave at a minimum town meeting with an adopted budget, and that anything that is above and beyond, that is contingent upon the passage of a question at the ballot box expressly says in the motion that it's contingent upon the passage of the ballot question.
Do you recommend, and I would assume that you would, but do you recommend that we replace an additional sum of money with this specific dollar amount?
So you certainly can. This is really a question of preference, and it differs municipality to municipality. I work in some municipalities where, as a matter of practice, when their warrants are issued, they specify the dollar amounts for all of the appropriations that are proposed for town meeting. That has not, for many items, I shouldn't say not for all items, because certainly not for all items, and maybe not even for the majority of items, but for many items in Lunenburg, that has not been your approach. For budgetary items, you often say to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money, and usually that's because at the stage in the process, especially in a community in Lunenburg, like Lunenburg, where you're mailing the ballots or the warrants to every household, which doesn't occur in many municipalities, you've got to get those to the printer. It requires additional lead time. You've got to have your warrant finalized much earlier on in the process than you might other... It requires additional lead time. You've got to have your warrant finalized much earlier on in the process than you might otherwise have to. And that being the case, you're often so early on in that budgetary process, you don't know the number. Or you want to provide yourselves with some flexibility with respect to the number and not be subject to arguments that modifications, amendments on the floor of town meeting are beyond the scope of the article. So traditionally, with many articles, you've used that term, a sum of money. Now, I appreciate that when you're talking about additional appropriations that will prompt an override, that's a sensitive topic. Homeowners, business owners, those in the community are going to want to get a sense as to what it is. They'll see it on the ballot, but that's going to occur later, right? And so whether you want to include a dollar amount or not, certainly you need a dollar amount in your motion, because you need to appropriate an accurate sum. But whether you want to include it in the warrant, it's not obligatory that you include it. It's really a matter of preference, and it does differ from community to community.
All right, I would propose to my colleagues that we do include the dollar amount in the warrant. I don't have remaining questions, but I just want to give the opportunity to all members of the board. And Lou, if we can just go this way, it might be easier. Lou?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Costa. So, to the extent possible, generally speaking, and I heard everything you just said, to the extent possible, the language of the warrant article should parallel the language of the ballot question. But you seem to be saying it would be okay that if the warrant article, it would be okay. I agree with Mr. Jeffries that just, you know, it would be better to have that dollar amount in there. But you could, it would not be unacceptable, if I hear you correctly, to have the warrant article say a sum of money, but the ballot question have the specific dollar amount.
That is correct. The one thing that's important in terms of alignment between the ballot question and the warrant article is that the purpose for which the monies are being spent has to mirror, one has to mirror the other. That's very specific. That's actually in the guidance document I was referring to. The purpose needs to be substantially the same. But the statute requires, in the ballot question, that the dollar amount be included. It does not require that for the town meeting warrant article, so that's a choice. Thank you.
But just to be clear, and first of all, through you, Mr. Chair, to the town manager, when does the ballot get printed?
So actually, that's something Attorney Costa brought up. So the annual town election warrant is in the booklet that gets mailed out. So that ballot question would be within the booklet at the time. So the board has to vote next Tuesday. That's the last day to vote on the ballot wording. And then I would submit, our office would submit that letter to the town clerk's office to be put on the ballot.
So I would have two comments, and somewhere in there is probably a question. Is that, I think we need, obviously, when you make the motion, it has to have a number. But if you kept the number off in the printed warrant that got mailed to all residents, it didn't. And the number, let's say the number changed, so you'd have a different number on the warrant than you did on the ballot, and the ballot passed, and which one, like what have you done at that point?
You had me about halfway through that hypothetical, so.
Okay, so here, I'll put it in particulars. We put sum of money, the ballot question goes to $1 million. I'm just going to make it easy, okay? But the warrant booklet that gets mailed just as a sum of money. But somewhere in the meantime, we come up with that it's not $1 million, it's $950,000 or $900,000 on the warrant at town meeting. So that passes with 900, but the ballot still has a million, but if it passes, have we raised 900,000 or have we raised a million?
You've raised a million, but you've only appropriated the 900,000.
Okay, so in order to confuse, even the question was confusing. In order to avoid that, I think we should come up with the same number and be accurate with that, because that will be a nightmare to explain to people.
That is how it works the best.
Okay.
I know this is outside the scope of the legal considerations, but just from a strategic standpoint, too, the idea of not, on an override question, not having the dollar amount in the warrant seems not wise.
I think the majority of the board seems to be in agreement on that point.
Yeah.
Did you have more?
Nope.
Okay. I had the same question that Mr. Alonso had. But can you comment on two things? One is the sequence of events, like all the scenarios. Let's assume the numbers on the warrant article, and it's on the ballot, and they match. You know, article fails, ballot fails, okay, both pass, so on. The other question I had was, can, in the process of that, maybe address what is possible to amend during town meeting on the floor? I think it's nothing, but I want to hear from you.
Sure. So certainly nothing, there can be no amendment at town meeting as regards the ballot question, right? The ballot question is the ballot question, so that number is not going to change in terms of the potential change to the levy limit to the dollar amount that's specified on the ballot, which of course, as I now understand, is actually printed in the town meeting warrant as well, so that number will be available. With respect to town meeting action, it's always a question of moderator discretion, right? So moderator, and we have a, there's Massachusetts General Laws and what they allow for, and then there's municipal custom and the way that your moderator operates. And we've had these debates at town meetings before about, well, can we adjust line items within the budget? Well, what about adjusting and transferring monies between departments? Can we transfer money with nowhere specified to where it's going or where it's coming from, so that we're essentially unbalancing what is otherwise a balanced budget? Every community deals with those sorts of things in a different way. Some communities will allow residents to stand to the podium and to make floor amendments that will result in an unbalanced budget. Other communities won't allow that to occur. And so could there be adjustments to the number? Well, sure. But it can't be adjusted in such a way that it becomes inconsistent. You couldn't appropriate money that you don't have, because the amount on the ballot question isn't high enough. You can't appropriate an additional sum of $1.8 million if the ballot question only allowed for a raise of the levy limit for an additional $1.5 million of revenue. So you are boxed in a bit by the amount that's on the ballot question. But in terms of the budget itself, you can modify that to the extent that your custom is to allow that modification to occur. I don't imagine the moderator would allow, based on past history, there to be adjustments within individual line items.
So is it fair to say you could amend down, but not up? Not over the limit, but you can amend, you could amend down.
Correct, correct. And I think if it's in education, my recollection is that education is voted as a single item within the budget, is it not? So it's not, you're not voting individual subcategories within education. So if, right, or the schools, right. So if the schools are a single line item, and that's what the contingent appropriation would be for, and that's a self-contained warrant article, there's an argument to be had that there's no adjusting whatsoever to that, the same way that there wouldn't be in the omnibus budget. But again, it's moderator discretion, so.
So one of the things that I think the board has to consider is, you know, if we encounter a circumstance in which the warrant article fails, but the ballot passes, as I understand it, the next action then could be for the select board to call a special town meeting to then try to redo the vote, essentially, that failed at town meeting. Am I correct in that? And if so, what is that timeline?
You are. For those of you that are looking at the guidance document, it's Appendix D, which is about as clear as mud in terms of how it reads. But it's somewhat helpful, but it takes a few read-throughs to fully understand it. So what you're talking about is, and I know there's no benefit here for those who are in attendance, but we're looking at column three. This is on page 20 of the guidance document. It's column three, which, and the only difference between these columns are the sequence. So column one is election and then an appropriation. Column two is appropriation and then an election. And column three, which is the sequence we'd be talking about here, is a contingent appropriation at town meeting, an appropriation that's contingent upon an override, followed by an election. And that's an available option in towns only, not in cities. And so when you look at what occurs here, it talks about the appropriation gets made by town meeting. That's step one. Step two is the election gets held, and it says the election deadline is September 15th for appropriations made at the annual town meeting. If the question passes, there's no further action required. The appropriation has been validated by virtue of the fact that the question passed. It then goes on to say if the question fails, there's no further action required, because the appropriation would just be null and void, because it was subject to a contingency. But it then says, however, the question may be presented at other elections, but must be approved by September 15th for appropriations that are made at an annual town meeting. Okay? I'm not quite done. So I don't think that was exactly the question, but that's the sequence, right? So then the question becomes, okay, well, what happens if you follow that same sequence? But the appropriation passes, excuse me, the appropriation fails, but the ballot question passes. Well, now you've essentially taken yourself, and you've moved yourself into column number one on this chart. I told you, it was about as clear as mud. So in question number one, you have the ability then. So question one says the election gets held, the question passes, but then you have the ability there. If the question passes and the appropriation fails, the question's valid. And if it's an override, you have until the tax rate is set to appropriate for the same purpose. So you could hold one, two, three, however many more special town meetings you wanted, to go back to special town meeting and attempt to have that appropriation made in reliance upon the ballot question, up until the tax rate is set.
The tax rate for the fiscal year that's already set?
Yes.
It's not set until the fall.
Got it, that's right.
Right, the fiscal '25 tax rate.
Got it, got it.
I didn't see why you said appropriation fails and question passes. I missed that.
It was appropriation passes and question fails.
Okay, I thought I heard the opposite.
No, it is question passes and appropriation fails.
Oh, there, okay.
So I can't speak for future boards, which we will have a future board after the election in May. But it is not my intent to, as a member, to get more than one bite at each opportunity. So I have no desire for us to bring the question back before the town if one passes and one fails. I think, in my view, both need to pass first opportunity, and that's what I would encourage. And I probably would be less inclined, but that would be a question for a future point, not for now. So as we think about moving forward, let's say, and I just want to ask the same question asked, but in reverse. So let's say that the appropriation passes, but the ballot fails. What action or course do we take then? Is it done? Is it dead on arrival? I know the answer is no.
So no, if the appropriation passes, but you go to the ballot box and the question fails, you can go back to the ballot box again. And again, I'm not suggesting that you do these things, to your point. I would say, in my experience, more often than not, municipalities won't make a second or a third or fourth pass. Just in recognition, whether it's an election or it's a special town meeting, there is a cost associated with that, especially in communities. I represent a few communities with 500 residents, and they can call a special pretty inexpensively. Community of 10,000 or 12,000 residents, not so much so. So I recognize that there's costs, but you have the ability to go back and put the question on a future election ballot.
Okay.
But that question, that has a timeline of September 15th.
September 15th, that's correct. It's 90 days if you do it at a special, but we're not. We're doing it in annual, so it's September 15th.
Okay. So I think for tonight, the action, as I understand it, I'm just pulling back up. The action is regarding what we consider now to be Article H in our warrant. And I am going to, to the board, I'm about to make a motion here. So I move to submit and amend what is currently identified as Article H to read as follows. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $948,136 to supplement the Lunenburg Public Schools' operating budget for fiscal year 2025, contingent upon the passage of a proposition two and a half ballot question, or take any other action relative thereto.
Second.
All right, any other discussion on this? And again, we are, this is a motion to submit and amend. Any other discussion? This is.
Not to pick nits, but is there a non-zero value after the decimal point, or is it zero, zero?
Zero, zero.
It is, okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second. As many as are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I've been wanting to say that for a while. Those opposed, no. Okay, so we have added to the warrant and amended Article H. Now, I understand that the school committee, and I'm going to ask Brian to come forward here in a moment, and Laura, I understand that the school committee is meeting tomorrow, and that there may be some discussion on this dollar amount. So the dollar amount, as I understand it, is looking at what was identified as the needs-based budget. And it's the difference between the needs-based budget and the level service budget minus the ESAR, plus the money that the select board has identified to go into ARPA or be funded from ARPA. So it is looking at that difference and then adding on the money that the select board has committed from ARPA. And in my understanding is, the purpose of that is the underlying number that gets raised and appropriated for the school budget. That there is concern, as I understand it from the school committee, that if, as it currently stands, going to town meeting for a four-point, I believe it's 19% increase, excuse me, five, I believe it's 4.44%, roughly, increase, that they would prefer that to be a 5.44% increase, the reason being that it affects their starting number next year. And so right now, in other words, with the select board committing ARPA funds to add into the school budget, that what we are raising and appropriating is not fully a 5.44% increase. And so their starting number next year, I'm saying this a little differently, will only reflect the 4.44 or so, because the ARPA funds wouldn't be counted into it. So my understanding is that the request for the override is that difference, but it's also adding back in those funds that we've committed from ARPA, so that way their bottom line raises. And Brian and Laura, I see you here. I want you to correct anything I just said wrong and to give any clarification there as far as this is concerned. And again, Brian Laitenin and Laura Brzezinski.
Brian Laitenin, Vice Chair, Vice Chair of the School Committee. I would, I guess I would refer to the superintendent and the town manager on the specific numbers, but I believe it was 5.34.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
But everything else sounded great. Thank you.
An 8.51% without the ARPA funding for the ESAR cut level service budget.
Correct.
Okay. All right. So I think we understand that. Well, before you guys go anywhere, does any member of the board have any questions for the representation of the school committee? I will first ask, is there a potential that the number will be adjusted tomorrow? And if so, we will need to get that information as soon as possible, because we have to decide by April the 2nd, our next meeting.
I can't say what's going to happen specifically at the meeting, but I will definitely let the chair know to reach out to you after our meeting.
Do you want to give us more money? But I don't see it as changing, but we're just two people.
Okay.
Our soonest meeting is Wednesday.
Okay, so we will get a communication, and that way, when we meet next week, if we need to make any modifications, we'll look to you to provide us with that number, so we can modify it, so it goes into the warrant. Okay?
And on the ballot question.
And on the ballot. Okay, thank you, Brian. Thank you, Laura. I think what's next then for us, as I understand it, Attorney Costa, is for the language on the ballot to be worked through with the town manager over the next week. It's, again, it's a pretty straight formula, and then next week, we will have the opportunity to vote on that. Okay?
I think that's right. I think Heather and I have worked on that language, so I think the language is ready to go, except we need the dollar amount. I think otherwise, it's, again, it follows more or less the form of the prescription and the statute, and the purpose has already been specified, so. Not a lot of work to be done, but we do need the dollar amount.
All right.
So can I, oh, are you done?
Of course.
So, Mr. Costa, you know, went through a couple of approaches where some towns can have multiple columns, you know, budget, and then with override, maybe they have more than overrides. Do we know what we're doing?
The approach that's on the.
Just one?
Just one number, because the school number is only a one appropriation number.
Okay.
Anyways, if there were multiple departments within that proposition two and a half article.
But you're not going to have columns for this is what it is without this Article H override?
We can do that as an appendix, similar to the budget.
All right, Attorney, any other members have any?
I would just comment, I'm assuming, although it doesn't have anything to do with the printed warrant booklet or the article, I'm assuming when somebody says, well, what are you going to use it for? They may want to see some kind of presentation from the schools about where that money is going. But that is, I'll leave that up to the school committee and the school department. As a member of town meeting, if I was in the audience, I would want to know where the money would be used, but not a requirement.
I would imagine, although this article is being submitted by the select board, I think that there is a reasonable expectation that it will be presented by the school committee at town meeting. Is that the fair assumption by the majority? Is that the fair assumption by the majority of the board?
Leave that to the school committee.
All right. So we'll, we'll, we'll leave the question to the school committee to get back to us on their ability to present. While we have Mr. Attorney Costa here with us, I want to provide an opportunity for the public who has any questions about the override or ballot process. If you have any questions to ask the board or the town's attorney, please feel welcome to come forward now.
Thank you, Mr. Costa. I just want to make sure.
Could you mind just?
Oh, I'm sorry, Amanda Gilman, 186 Reservoir Road.
Thank you.
I, I'm sorry, I should know to do that. So should the, it not pass at town meeting, but it passes on the ballot? The select board could decide to have a town, a special town meeting to pass it again. I, I understand. If the select board, which will be the newly elected board in May, decides not to do that, it will just die. Is there a time period that it has to, that has to happen in? I just want to make sure I understand.
Sure. So i- if it's going to happen, it has to happen before the tax rate is set.
Okay.
And that date is in the fall. I don't know the exact date.
That's fine.
And I think it varies, it varies year to year.
Mid-November is when we have a special every year, and the tax rate is set after that.
After that November.
There are appropriation changes at that town meeting.
So, because we usually do have a special town meeting, my understanding, but it could ha, it could wait till that special town meeting if it was called, and then.
Right. So the, the question then sort of becomes, because you commented on it dying, or does it die?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, there's no declaration of it. It's dead, right?
Yeah. No, I think things, things die quietly sometimes in government, but I just want, I just wanted to make sure. And it is my understanding that if a group of citizens wanted to ask for a town meeting, a second special town meeting, there is a provision for that in our bylaws. Is that correct?
There is a provision in statute.
In statute.
There's, there's a process in statute for requests to be made for the calling of a special town meeting.
Special town meeting, correct. I'm not saying any of this would happen, I'm just curious.
Yeah, it's a good question.
Thank you.
You might not want to leave yet, because I might confuse it. What's the September 15th, then? That's when we had to have.
The other way around. Yeah.
Oh, that's for the other way around. If it weren't.
Appropriations made, but the ballot question fails.
I thought that's what Mandy asked.
No, she asked the reverse, I think.
I asked if the ballot question passed, and it didn't pass at town.
Yeah, the appropriation fails, yeah.
Which is probably less likely, but I just, you know, I.
You go to column 1.
Yeah, yeah.
Why would they make things simple?
I don't know.
Then what would we all do? Thank you.
Thank you, Mandy. Do we have any other questions from the public?
Just when I thought you were going to stump them. Never get stumped.
All right. Thank you, Adam. Thank you, Attorney Costa.
Not related to the override, but I thought something came up last week that we had a question, and while Attorney Costa was going to be here.
Were you talking about the historical condition?
I don't know. Was it? I know it's something. I can't.
Well, Adam said he's not in a rush, so he will.
I'm looking at Heather. Maybe town manager remembers, because, no.
I do not recall, but this was, the agenda topic was for any questions related to warrant articles. If you had any other questions.
Are you here for the, I think you're here for the duration, correct?
Yeah.
Oh, you are?
So, thank you, Attorney, thank you, Attorney Costa, for the assistance with that. Are there any final questions for the board before we move to our 7:45? All right. I just want to comment that when the town manager and I were working on this agenda, she, she listed the 7:45 as eight o'clock, and she listed the eight o'clock as an 8:30, and I'm like, push that back, there's going to be a quicker conversation. All right, let's go to our 7:45 meeting with the personnel committee representative on the personnel committee annual town meeting warrant articles. And to the town manager, would you mind just refreshing us which number these, or letter these are?
Just one second.
I think it's I and J.
There's three articles.
So the letters we're noting tonight are going to change by the time they get to the booklet. There's, usually they're just noted in the order they come in, and then there's usually an organization of them. So there's three articles that we have in front of us, and to my colleagues on the board, we're looking at I, J, and K. And the I one is the amending the code of Lunenburg, Chapter 70, Schedule A, entitled salary admin plan. J is, well, the same thing. One is for fiscal year '25, one's for fiscal year '24, and then the K is related to the sick leave. So if you wouldn't mind, just kind of giving us an overview of why these articles are in front of us, and I think the town manager is going to share them on the screen.
Wendy Bertrand, 71 Longwood Drive.
Thank you.
Personnel committee member. So we were tasked with looking at, as there is review per the charter every three years, looking at the salary grid. We have, I mean, we, we've come and spoken with you before, so you know we've gone through this process. So these, we went through many scenarios, looking at different comps. These were what we felt were in the best, the best interest of, you know, finance and our, giving our employees, getting them to a much more competitive wage at all grades. So FY '24, FY '25, and then, I'll talk sick leave in a moment.
Okay.
So those were, I, you did receive those, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have questions for us?
Does the board have any questions related to the proposed changes to the salary administration plan as noted in what's currently identified as Articles I and J?
I'm looking at the pay grid, so I'm not looking at that, but is that, the positions being added? Let me just go to the.
I think the font's a little hard. While we have a moment, if I can ask the clerk, would you mind reading I and J?
Sure, let me switch back over, because I just closed, went to the grid myself. All right, so I, "To see if the town will vote to amend the code of Lunenburg, Chapter 70, Schedule A, entitled salary administration plan of the town in Lunenburg for fiscal year 2025 as follows. The position of library page to be assigned to grade two. The position of council on aging meal site manager to be assigned to grade seven. The position of outreach coordinator to be assigned to grade eight. The position of PAC manager to be assigned to grade 12. The position of police executive assistant to be added and assigned to grade 10. To rename the reserve officer position title to police reserve officer, or take any other action relative thereto."
All right. And would you mind also reading J?
J, "To see if the town will vote to replace the current salary schedule in the code of Lunenburg, Chapter 70, Section 70-8.A, entitled salary administration plan, Schedule A, with a fiscal year 2024 salary schedule and fiscal year 2025 salary schedule as recommended by the personnel committee, which authorizes wage increases for fiscal year 2024 and fiscal year 2025 for permanent employees not covered by a collective bargaining unit agreement or individual contract, and further transfer a sum of money from available funds to fund the wage increase for fiscal year 2024, and transfer a sum of money from available funds to fund the wage increases for fiscal year 2025 for salary administration plan employees, or take any other action relative thereto."
All right. And so I know the board is looking at the grid. Any questions from the board?
I do, just quickly, I, because I don't have both open at the same time. I, that's, that's too tricky for me. So I don't have the grid open, but I have Article I open. With regard to the council on aging meal site manager, assigned, being assigned to grade seven, does that whole discussion that happened earlier about whether that's going to be bumped up or not, like, impact, does that play into this at all?
I don't think Wendy was here for that public comment.
Okay.
I would, I think that Article I is just the positioning of the grades. It has nothing to do with salaries. It has to do with where the positions are on the grade. That's why I asked. J is the money one.
In effect, placing it at a higher grade would obviously change.
Yes. Indirectly it changes the salary.
Indirectly, yes.
So.
But that was, those positions were ones that we looked at within the comps and within their, their revised job descriptions, and said, these are not in the appropriate grade based on their job description, and looking at similar positions in the eight comp communities we looked at.
Okay.
It was lower significantly.
Yep. So let me see, so even if, let's just say hypothetically for a minute, that a decision were made to fund that position as requested, this, this would not, this would not change the grade at all, is what you're saying? That job description?
Well, our recommendation is to bring it to a seven.
Right. Okay. All right.
I have one question. Any of the change, grade level changes in I, did any of them go down, or did, or they're all bumped up?
They're all, so all of them were, for example, PAC manager was between one and three grades where, where it previously was at 11, below other department heads. When we looked at the scope of, scope of responsibility within their job, as well as where other department heads sat, we at least felt that they needed to be, that that position needed to be brought up with other department heads. It shouldn't be lower than.
Okay.
Every other one.
So all the changes in I are all?
Are all up. Everybody's up.
Along those lines, although it's a bump up, did anyone have a net pay decrease then?
No.
Okay.
No. That wasn't, that was not the goal, at all.
All right.
So, yeah, I'm looking at the SAP salary survey for fiscal year '24 spreadsheet, the one that has all the comp analysis.
Yep.
And just to summarize, based on what I see, a lot of them are under the average, and then it has a percentage for each role. So about like 80% of them are below the average, and some of them like, kind of significantly so, from like 20% to like 36, 37%. Does this address that? Is it bringing these roles to the average?
Yes, and that was the goal, was to get them to the median.
Okay.
Yes. I mean, not knowing, other towns could be redoing their grids again.
Right.
I mean, we have no way of knowing that, but it does address that.
Okay.
So that was the goal, to be at least for all positions at the median, and some, some are higher.
Yeah.
And the other part is, where folks are, because we are changing steps as well, sort of getting rid of step one, and putting another step on the end, we're addressing a lot of those who are, employees who are already at top step. So not only would they receive a COLA, but then also a step increase, which hadn't happened for them in a long time.
Okay, so we're bringing them up to the median, and then also having a 2.5 COLA on top of that, too.
Yes, on top of, yes, both years.
Awesome. Thank you.
So what, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yep.
So what is the average increase in the FY '24 grid, then?
It, it varies grade to grade. Do you?
Okay. Is there a chart that I would get that from? I'm, I'm presented with three spreadsheets here with no explanation, so I'm asking for an explanation.
I'm Sue Andrews. I live at 81 Horizon Island Road. I'm on the committee. And so in '24, we came to you last year and asked the grid to be changed by 2.5% because we weren't sure how this project was going to turn out. And then as we looked at it, and looked at the survey results, and looked at the clerical union results that just took place before this, that we didn't do enough. So when we changed the '24 and added this new amount to it, it is, in essence, gave him another 3%, perhaps. Depends on where they were in the steps, but it would give the 2.5 we put for the grid last year with your permission, and the town meeting approved it, and now this is asking you to do an additional, almost 3% on top of it. So it'd be like 5.5% for last year, and it'll be 2.5% next year, 2.5 grid change. But the step increases, if you know anything about compensation, the step increases from one to two to three to eight, we have eight steps, are 3% lift. So if you're at step two, when you go to step three, you get 3%. When you go to step four, you get another 3%, which happens once a year. So if we change the grid by 2.5, and you get your step, you could get 5.5%.
And everyone got that by us taking step one off and putting it on the other end. So all those folks that are in positions where they were already at top step, they now were able to get that as well. So that was how we worked to even things out more, and, and give folks more of a bump.
So am I correct in saying that since you took off step one and moved everybody over, that gave everybody 3% from what you just said? And then in FY '25, you're giving them the 2.5, so everybody got 5.5, at least. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes, at least.
Yes. The only people who don't, Tom, are the people who are sitting at step eight. They are at the maximum. They're great. We have a lot of employees at that, that have been here a very long time, and they're sitting at step eight. All they would get is the change in the grid, which is the 2.5.
Unless their position bumped up a grade.
Unless their position, the five positions that we bumped up, correct.
Okay. Okay. So if I was in, if I was a person who occupied one of those, this wouldn't be such a great day.
Actually, they all should feel very positive about the outcome. I think we've moved it along, and we've tried to anticipate at '25 that we've moved them along enough so that we've made quite an impact, the adjustment to '24, and then the increase to '25. So remember, by dropping a grid and adding it to the top, even the people who are sitting at the max this year have one more step that they'll be eligible for next year.
I think what would be helpful at the town meeting presentation is to identify, I think this is where Mr. Alonso is going, but you can correct me, to identify what the rate was when you started, and what the rate is by position when you ended. And I think maybe a, an annual dollar amount may be a helpful target number, because I think that that will allow people to visually see kind of what we're doing here, because I think not everyone, I, I know I've said it a couple of times before, like, the math ain't mathin', but it's kind of a joke, but not everyone understands math the way that those of us who are in it do, and that kind of visualization of the numbers, I think, helps people get a better understanding. Can I put words in your mouth, Tom?
No, no, I mean, I, I, I guess my concern is that everybody's been talking about salaries, and, and again, I know all the work that you guys put in, into this, so again, I want to thank you for all that. But if I was one of those people, and 2.5 in a world where inflation is more than 2.5, then I'm not even treading water. So as a top-level person, you're actually losing ground. And in a time when we're talking about salaries and adjustments to what people are making, because the world went crazy over the past four years, I want to make sure we keep good people, and we don't lose them to other places, and I want people to be, be treated, felt like they're being treated fairly in their jobs. I mean, I understand, everybody thinks they should make more, but I mean, that, most people are also pretty good at understanding what's fair. And I, all those things balancing is important to me, to make sure we have an appropriately paid-for workforce without losing people, without breaking the bank on the town, you know, budgeting side, which of course, we already have strains on already, so, I mean, it's not an easy position.
That was something that we had the discussion about. Realistically, how much would the town be, you know, be willing to support? Because it's, it's not carte blanche. So I feel like we, we went to the wall as much as we could.
Well, I would, what I would say in that regard, if I was in your role, because I've said this to other departments, too, was like, I, I don't know that the personnel committee, and this is my personal belief, I don't know that that would be your charge to see what the, what the town should or could afford. I think what the charge would be, like, what do you think in a personnel world is fair in the current market? And then make a pitch to say, this is what's fair. And if we have to raise things to attract the right people and to attract good people, And if we have to raise things to attract the right people, and to attract good people, then that's what it is, and people can decide accordingly.
I think this tracks pretty well, because the federal government, just for their twenty-four years, but FY twenty-four, they just announced a five-point-two adjustment, because they have a very similar structure where they have grades and steps, just like we do. And so they recognized, the federal government last year only did three percent. And this year, they're doing five-two with an extra five points in case you live in a high district like San Francisco and New York City, and you need something other than what you might need in Kansas. And so we're following that track, and even the state of Massachusetts just announced a three percent, uh, grid adjustment for their twenty-four. So all of us are trying to struggle with the same thing, to move them along a little more, because most, most municipalities last year did two, and they've done two for the past three, four, or five years. So this gives us a little bit of an edge, I think, to go back in twenty-four and adjust up somewhat. That gives them a lift, and then going into twenty-five, I think it gives them an additional lift. So I think it puts us in a very good position.
If I may, Mr. Chair, through you to the Town Manager, can, have you, what does a dollar amount impact on the, the chart? And the, the grid that they're given to it?
It's on the bottom of that, both.
Charts.
Fiscal twenty-four is...
Which, which one? Is at the bottom of which one of the grids?
It's at recommended FY twenty-four and twenty-five grids. So at the bottom of, oh, I'm on twenty-five, but the bottom of twenty-five, this, I, I was kind of confused about. So there's total cost, one hundred and one thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight, and then there's less sewer enterprise, less PAC. So there's subs, there's subtractions, and then the total is eighty-nine thousand.
Because there's certain enterprises, they pay for their indirect costs related to labor.
So the F-one, FY twenty-four cost is eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and sixty-one cents. And then I think we're seeing for the FY twenty-five cost, and this is asset enterprise, um, funds, is a hundred and ten thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents.
So two hundred thousand dollars over the two years.
If you don't include the enterprise employees.
Does the board have any remaining questions?
How many positions does this cover?
Eighty-five.
Some are, some of those are seasonal.
Right. And what was the, if I may, one last question. What, what was the reaction of the people covered under this? Did you hear from them?
The people?
The people covered under the Salary Admin Plan?
I think the process has been difficult for them to understand how we move along. So the, probably the past month, we've come to the final recognition. So we haven't heard as much from them since, I think, that we finished the job descriptions, and then we finished the survey, and made an assessment about what we recommend to you, so.
Have they seen, has this been distributed to all the members of the Salary Admin Plan?
That I don't know. It wouldn't have been submitted, I mean, it's a public record, so it would have, they could see it if they wanted to see it, yep.
The reason I ask, I mean, again, because we make a parallel between union positions, who would obviously see what they're being offered before they sign on. You would, one would think, I would think, at least that they would see this as it was being presented, or at least at the same time, that it would be sent to them so they could review it.
So I think there's an implied ask there, this could be communicated, um, to the employees, so that way they're aware, so we can get their comments or, uh, questions. But I know that, you know, generally speaking, we stick to a two-and-a-half model on our general, our two percent model, or two-and-a-half percent model, on the union negotiations, to stay with what the town's able to raise and appropriate on an annual basis. So, um, you know, this is an improvement. Does the board have any remaining questions for the representation from the Personnel Committee this evening?
A basic one. When you move up a grade, you stay in the same step? Step doesn't change, you just move?
You go to the nearest step, uh, that's up. So you never lose money if you go to the next grade. You would go to whatever the next step is that's appropriate. So if you made, you know, nine dollars and fifty cents, and you go to the next grade, you'd make sure that whatever the step is, it's more than nine dollars and fifty cents.
But it wouldn't be, if you were a grade seven, step eight, you wouldn't go up to grade eight, grade eight?
The nearest.
The nearest step up from what you were making.
I guess I had assumed that for any one step, as you go up in grades, it goes, the, the dollar goes up.
It will.
So I can't imagine a scenario where you go up in steps, I mean, go up in grade, keep the step the same, that you would be going to a lower pay.
You would never go.
Okay, that's what, okay.
You would never go, you would go to the next, whatever the highest is, next highest step.
So let's say somebody was a step seven, grade eight, and they made twenty-five dollars an hour, just for round figures. When you look at, if we were going to move a position to grade eight, because we felt like that's where it truly should be, we look at the grade eight steps, and the one closest above twenty-five dollars would be where they would go.
Oh, so it, I could see, okay, so I could see they could go down in step.
That's what's gonna...
And still get more money, but be in a higher grade.
Yes, but then that's going to give them more latitude over the next few years to continue.
But you wouldn't change grades unless two things happen. Either you change jobs, or it gets reclassified.
Right, which is what we brought forward here. And those were three positions, and then we obviously had one coming out of the clerical union that needed to be placed on the grid. And on the clerical union piece, we really looked heavily at that. There are several grades that correspond on the SAP grid, and we looked heavily at that our last two meetings, to ensure, because obviously, we had the F, what FY twenty-five and twenty-six would look like for the clerical, so we really wanted to ensure that we were in line there. Because that was, that was a true and very valid, valid concern.
Okay.
Can I just, uh, just for clarification, I want to make sure I heard it right. Fiscal twenty-four, you said drops two, um, steps off the plan, and adds two steps on the end.
One.
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 They removed step one.
Remove step one.
And if you really looked at twenty-four, one of the dilemmas we were faced with is we never wanted to pay below minimum wage,
even though municipalities can do that, we didn't choose to do that. And step one really was below minimum wage. And we only had one job in there, and it was the library page, which is the high school children who come and work after school. So we essentially thought that those, we kind of reevaluated them and said, nobody should be at what one is, really. We wanted to always start higher than minimum wage.
And even, we wanted to ensure we were above it, because the state could tell us, we're going up again. So we wanted to try and be ahead of that, which is why we went to fifteen fifty as the absolute bottom.
And were, was the board unanimous in its decision on the votes, uh, as far as approving all of this?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, the step confusion on one of these, uh, the recommended FY twenty-four, FY twenty-five grids, it says at the top, FY twenty-four drop two steps.
I think that's the wrong one, it's the one.
I don't know, there's like three.
It starts at fifteen fifty.
That one starts, yes.
Fifteen fifty.
So it took off one and two?
Well, I think we just want to start at fifteen fifty, but our intention was to just drop step one.
So there may be something that it's already taken off the grid, and you just have a comment here? Uh, because I think what you're saying is that previously it was below minimum wage. We don't see anything below minimum wage, so there must have been something along the way, and then I, I read this as a comment.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, it is at the top of your chart.
At the very top of the table, so it's confusing.
FY twenty-four grid, it says FY twenty-four drop two steps, and then in FY twenty-five, it says drop step one.
That's true, on step, on twenty-five.
Right, but, okay, so that's...
So the first here, you drop? Oh.
Assistant Town Managers on Zoom.
Yeah, we're, we're on the back screen, we don't see it all. So the Assistant Town Manager, Julie.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, perfect. So for FY twenty-four, yes, we are dropping the first two steps. Current step three is currently fifteen fifty. That is going to be the new starting point with the new proposed FY twenty-four grid. Then in FY twenty-five, we're dropping that step for every grade, and starting at that existing, uh, new step two. So yes, so essentially, I just wanted to clarify, we are dropping two steps for FY twenty-four.
Okay. So what used to be step?
Three.
Three will now be step one. Got it.
For FY twenty-four.
And adds two on the back end.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yep, and then for FY twenty-five, you're adding in two and a half percent COLA and dropping a step.
Got it.
So that's where you're seeing the sixteen thirty-seven as the new step.
Okay. Any remaining questions from the board?
Just a quick one, curiosity, and I don't want to take a ton of time, so if you don't know the answer. What happens if the state passes a minimum wage that exceeds the lowest end of this grid?
Well, we would probably, uh, just assess if anyone was below that. We have very few employees that sit in that grade, at that lower level, and mostly they're, perhaps summer folks, or... So, but we would, uh, probably, at some, whatever the next appropriate point is, make a recommendation that they be given an adjustment up.
But to be clear, the municipality can pay below minimum wage.
Correct.
It is, and that's part of the reason we brought library pages up in our, in the Warren article. So at a, at a grade two, you're going to bypass that.
We hope that we've made enough of an adjustment to hold that for a little bit.
Okay. Do we have any other questions on these two articles before we go to Kay? All right, so I think I understand how Kay came about. So, um, do you want to speak to Kay?
Can I speak to Kay? So when we looked at our by, our bylaws, it was brought to our attention that, um, there really wasn't equity there. Um, and looking at other bargaining units in town, particularly our schools, not being able to use any sick time for a parental leave just wasn't where the world was at these days. So, um, and there was an employee who came forward to us with concern about that. So we sat and we looked at it. We looked, we looked at what the schools had, um, we looked at what other communities had, in, in what we could see for contracts online. So we were striving to give anyone taking parental leave the opportunity to use, if they had it, sick time in addition to, um, vacation and personal.
So I know that I reached out to the majority of the members of the Personnel Committee to urge some action on this front. Um, I think it, it was pretty clear, as we go through our bylaws, that our bylaws actually read that you can't take sick time for the purpose of a birth of a child. And I was floored, shocked, um, that we have that. And I'm like, we need to, we need to make some changes, and we need to make them now. Um, so I understand where this has come about, because it's problematic language. And I do appreciate that there's a correction here. I know that I was, I, I think I had in mind something a little less, so I do want to just ask a couple of questions. So one of the things, one of, one of the analysis that was done was that, you know, commentary, the state passes laws all the time that, that they exempt the government from, right? Uh, they exempt themselves from open meeting law, they exempt us from having to comply with minimum wage law. Um, and they created a new, you know, Medical Leave Act, and then they exempted every municipality from, from it. So all the private companies have to do it, but the municipalities don't, um, unless they choose to opt in. So the general language, as we look across the town, I think the school district had the most generous, um, policy, as I recall. And their policy was fifteen days, if I remember correctly, something along that lines. Uh, it may have been a little more than that.
For a non-birthing parent.
For a non-birthing parent. Um, and so what it looks like is that what you've done here, and the key language that you're modifying here, is, is, and I'm going to read it. If an employee becomes a parent with or without giving birth, and then in parentheses, e.g., because the employee's spouse gives birth to a baby, comma, or the employee adopts a child, period, uh, employees may access up to eight weeks, which is forty days, of sick leave. However, all other available accrued time, such as vacation and personal time, must be exhausted first. And my understanding is that that last portion mirrors what's in the state law, as it refers to the Family Medical Leave Act, that you need to exhaust all your other time before you can then start utilizing sick time. And part of that is, for people who aren't aware, if you leave a job, your, your sick time is not necessarily payable out to you, but all your other time is. So how did you land on eight weeks, uh, forty days?
Um, it's, according to, if you have that amount in there, it isn't all paid, so that, I want to make that clear. It isn't like we're paying them for eight weeks. And I think it's kind of what the industry has gone to over the past couple of years, to be much more, uh, open about that. And, uh, the, I don't know what the state will do about disability for municipalities, whether they'll change that law in the future or not. So I think we just didn't see it before, because no one ever came before us and said, that language is really odd. No one had a need to ask us to do it. So we think that we provided a broad enough scope to last us a little while.
So the other question is, in thinking of, you know, someone who has a child, right? Where you're in zombie land for those first, like, you know, three, six months or so, um, you know, and you're, and you just went through all your time. It could be a life-changing event, especially if it's your first child. What this does, and if I'm correct, the way that employees accumulate time, it's based on the calendar year, is that correct?
Um, fiscal.
Fiscal year, fiscal year, excuse me, fiscal year. So if an employee, for example, were to be on leave.
Based on start date.
Siggen?
Based on start date.
Based on start date.
Benefited start.
So generally, though, if an employee, uh, if the accruals occur or get added to the account, let's say their time off balance, everything gets added about July first, right, roughly for most?
It's an accrual, so if they started mid-year, though, they'd start the accrual process, and there's, I think, a six-month...
It's not just dumped in on July one.
Okay.
It's accrued.
Every month.
So every month, and that's what I want to get clarity on. So if an employee is out on sick leave, and they start accruing vacation time, how does this work? Do they have to then come off of sick leave, and then burn through their vacation time to get back on sick leave? So how would that work, as you envision it with this change?
Well, I, I think we have to keep in mind that, that most employees who are in a position to start a family usually plan out. You know, they're planning out, and they save their time, they save their personal time, or they save their sick time. And, and remember, our school department doesn't necessarily have vacation time, so, so every group, whatever the group is, the person will probably save. So I think that the policy just kind of implies that if you have it, you do this first. And if they accrue some more, uh, my guess is that it will be minimal, and it won't drastically impact how we execute to that. So if they have it at the end, and they still need time off, then they would use it, I would guess.
Do you think it would be helpful, and this is, and this is where I'm going, at the end of this sentence, when it says, however, all other available accrued time, such as vacation and personal time, must be exhausted first, do you think it would be helpful to add in a another kind of verbiage here that just clarifies must be exhausted prior to the sick leave beginning? So that way, they can still accrue vacation time?
It wouldn't stop them accruing any vacation time.
I, I...
I'll, we'll give that some thought and see if that...
Okay. Because I, I think the question, as I'm trying to dig into it, the concern is really about how an employee maneuvers this. You know, eight weeks is covering two months. Eight weeks is covering roughly two months. Um, and if in that time, you're still accruing time off, my only concern would be that, you know, someone is then going to be forced to use all that time to keep using the sick time in the current verbiage. I would assume that the Town Manager would not implement it that way. But there may, we may have a future Town Manager who may read this differently.
Right.
So that's my only concern about the way it's worded. But I fully support this. I think that as a community, you know, we depend upon people to have children. We need those children to have a good education, and we need them to grow up, um, and, and have jobs. Uh, and so, you know, there's a whole process in how all this works, and so harming the parental process, uh, which is what I think our current bylaw does, I really appreciate that this is an appropriate remedy. And I want to thank my colleagues, I usually try not to go first, but I know this is something near and dear to me. And so I want to thank my colleagues for, for forming some grace here by kind of taking the first stab here.
And the forty days, just to address that, um, we had, we had a great deal of discussion about this. Three weeks was where our discussion began. But if you look at FMLA, someone could take twelve weeks without pay. And our thought is, if people actually have that time available, but, you know, regardless of order, you know what I mean? Vacation, I mean, vacation, personal, and then sick, why would we not want them to use that time and get paid for it? If you're home with a new child, you know, not having income, you know, when you've got, you know, diapers to buy, et cetera, is... You know, it, it doesn't make us an attractive employer from the benefit side.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, so the FMLA, I think, is it the same at every company? I don't know, I can speak for mine. It's sixty percent pay for twelve weeks.
No, only if you have your own personnel manager. Yes, it's unpaid by law.
Not PF, so PFMLA is a little different, and we don't pay into municipalities, typically do not pay into PFMLA.
How long does it take to accrue forty days of, of sick time?
Depends, depends on how long you've been here. So your accrual rate is going to be different the longer you've been here.
And you can carry over, it doesn't, can you? So can you carry it over from year to year?
Yes.
Yes.
What is the maximum, what is the maximum you can accrue?
That's in the bylaw. It's hard to keep every bargaining agreement and...
I'm just assuming, I'm just assuming it's greater than forty days.
Yeah.
Okay, because putting it in that you could use forty days, if you can't even get to forty days, would be kind of weird, normally.
Yes.
If you have it.
Right, but you can get there, is the point.
And a combination. Somebody could be at a point where they have, they've been here longer than five years, so they have three weeks vacation. They get their personal time, so in... So, in the end, the sick portion wouldn't necessarily be the 40 days. The sick portion might be.
Yeah, but that's why, I mean, it's written, you can use 40 days of sick time after you've exhausted everything else. I'm just saying. I, I, I think, I can't believe we haven't had it. It's really, it's kind of embarrassing.
Never came up.
Yep.
1,200 hours, I think, total.
1,200, yes.
So, that's the most that someone can accrue is 1,200?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and, and my math is not mathin' that quick.
The most somebody can accrue is?
1,200 hours.
1,200 hours?
Because we have.
So, what does that come into? I don't, I don't live my life in hours. How many days is that?
Forty hours, 40 hours in a week. So, 30.
30 business days, so that's roughly six weeks or so.
So, in good planning, vacation, sick, personal, maybe you can map all that together and get time, enough time.
Does the board have any remaining questions?
I want to thank the personnel committee, present and the whole committee for all the work they've done.
Donna's here as well.
There is an, an open parentheses in here, I don't know.
Yes, that's missing, yeah.
It's kind of, all right, we will make sure that.
I noticed it too.
Yeah, I'm trying not to notice it.
I wasn't the one.
I couldn't, it was.
So, if you guys are able to, I know that you guys would have to call a meeting pretty quick, but if you're able to just, you know, either find a way to make.
Thursday at 5:00.
Perfect. So, if you can make an amendment to that parentheses issue, and then if you can bring up the concern about the end language here, so that way, it's just a little clearer that employees don't have to keep going back and forth, that once they start the process, they're in the process, that would be helpful. All right, any other questions from the board?
Just a quick thing, as long as we're doing things like open parentheses, the EG, the period is slid over and it needs a comma after the second.
In which one?
EG.
On the example, yeah.
This isn't the final draft.
See, you guys really this big? Yes, yes, we are.
I just wanted to say thank you as well to the personnel committee and the assistant town manager as well, because I know all of you have spent a lot of time, hours beyond working hours, and you have your own jobs, the personnel committee too. So, thank you, and thank you to the assistant town manager.
I want to extend that as well. I know that this has been a lot of work, and I really appreciate, especially on the sick time one, because I think I called you guys over a weekend and you didn't have a lot of time to react.
Friday at 5:30.
So, I want to thank you for really taking this up and hearing the concern and getting this addressed and ribbing this, as well as the long work that went on. And I also want to extend that thanks to Julie for her work with you guys as well. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Eight o'clock.
Matt, thank you for being patient with us this evening, Mr. Brenner.
So, we have a couple of articles while Mr. Brenner comes forward and says his name and address, I believe you're Northfold Road, if I remember correctly. But while Mr. Brenner's coming forward, he's going to speak to two articles that are rather lengthy, and if you wouldn't mind just giving us an overview in our booklets, I think these are identified as what, Z and AA, if I'm correct?
No, it's now Y and Z.
Y and Z. So, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Brenner, just explaining the purpose of these, you don't need to go line by line, but just the general gist.
Absolutely. Matthew Brenner, Planning Board Chair. Do you need my address when I'm here as a chair as well?
No.
Okay, wasn't sure. All right, so, we've got two articles before you today. One is Water District, one, not Water, Water, sorry, Water Supply Protection District. The other is Battery, Battery Solar Rays, which aren't solar but are totally solar because that's how the state works now. So, we're going to start with Water because that, we've talked about that, right? Six months ago, I came to y'all and, or Adam and I did, and we talked about the, about updating our really, really old Water Supply Protection District that went to town meeting, a special town meeting in the fall, great discussions, got tabled to the spring. We looked at it, looked at some changes that would help. Mr. Richard Harris, our interim contract land use director, had a bunch of really good input, and the short version is, the meat on this is, is real similar to the meat that we all saw in the fall. It's just been rearranged, and we're bringing it forward as a new article because no one wants a five-page-long amendment at town meeting, that's not going to help anyone understand what's going on. The kind of full overview is, you know, from scratch, is our Water Supply Protection District bylaws are older than dirt. Takes about seven years to make some good soil, and I think we're looking at 30 on that. Engineer, engineering has changed, technology has changed, our understanding of the aquifer has changed. In addition, DEP has put out new maps. Period, a few times, a couple times at least in the past, the Water District said, hey, what about this as an updated bylaw? Got put down by the town. We took that feedback and tried to put something together that would work for the town. And in the end, the big feedback at Springtown Meeting, once after tons of public feedback, was a lot of people saying, I think we can be comfy with this, but we really need more time to understand. All right, that's great. Time is a fair thing. What we did then is, Mr. Harris did a line-by-line comparison between our current bylaw and the proposed, to make sure we really understood what was changing, because there was a question if we really did, we did understand, but now we know for sure. While doing that, he looked at it and said, maybe we could word some of this better. And that's why there's some rearranging of the topics to hopefully make it more user-friendly. In the end, as the bylaws currently presented, this could change, as the bylaws currently presented, we're getting out of the Zone 1 business. That's the 500, I think it's 500, 400 feet, 400, thank you, around, around a wellhead. It can be lower than 400 feet, but really, for any town, any town-related well is going to be 400 feet, okay? If it's a small well with little draw, it could be as small as 200-foot radius. And as the bylaws presented now, the town's getting out of that business because we've never really enforced anything there, and it's not, we're not the ones who are supposed to. That's DEP. DEP or DEP through the Water District, there's, but that's their business. They're the ones who control it and are supposed to address that. Great, get us out of there. Zone 2, basically, we're giving a whole bunch of rights back to landowners because engineering's awesome and gets better over time. It used to be that we had to say, look, you can't have more than 15% impermeable in this area, otherwise, we're going to really screw, Zone 2 being the area that is directly recharging our aquifers. Let me say that. And back then, if you covered more than 15% of that area with impermeable, with stuff that water can't get through, you're in trouble. Engineering's gotten better, we have a much better understanding of how to get water into the ground. And because of that, we can say, you can't do more than 15% impermeable unless you're taking specific steps to mitigate and get that water in the ground. Great. Zone 3, and there's a bunch of banned uses that are, I believe, the same as the current banned uses. You can't have an automobile junkyard over, directly over where water's going into aquifers because that's not good for drinking water. As one example, landfills, large chemical storage. What we did include, this is different from the model bylaw the state put in, is we explicitly included language that allows residents to have the things residents normally have. Because the model DEP language would not let you have a bucket of salt in your garage. To, you could use salt on your walkway, but you can't have a bucket of it. So, you can't have any, but you're allowed to use it, that's weird. So, we, so we included language specifically for things like common household chemicals, like, like the gas you'd have for your lawnmower, normal things. Zone 3 used to have all the same bans as Zone 2. The input from the Water District is, that's not really necessary. And there was some back and forth, even at last night's Planning Board meeting, about, okay, but is it okay to say you could have a landfill in Zone 3, for example? And the actual answer is that all those uses that could be questionable in other parts of our bylaw, not in the water, not in this water section, but in other parts where bylaw are already approved by special permit only. So, we don't, so the answer is, we can still evaluate and make sure it makes sense. Zone 3, I apologize, is the area that water flows down to then recharge. It doesn't go right into the aquifer, but it, you know, that's the, that's the whole recharge, that's the area where water goes down the hill, then goes into the ground in Zone 2. And this is basically just set up so that there's still plenty of review, and special permit is a subjective review. We're allowed to look at it holistically. You hear site plan approval a lot at, at planning board meetings, that's like a checklist, right? If you meet the requirements on paper as listed, done. Special, a special permit lets us look at it holistically, lets us, lets us look at its broader impact on an area and make sure it is appropriate. So, that's the changes from the current bylaw. Now, things that could pivot from here are, some residents have come forward expressing concern because we're getting out of the Zone 1 business. With absolutely no disrespect to anyone in the community, because I get how we get here, this is one of those moments I find hilarious about town government, because we got, in the original bylaw, we got out of the Town 1, out of the Zone 1 business, in part because people were so upset the town was legislating Zone 1 when it had no business doing that. So, we pull back, and now the feedback is, wait, 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 we actually want the town in here. And now with some more discussion, there's some residents who are concerned about protections that they theoretically have in Zone 1, that it's not super clear we're actually removing anything. And that's something we're going to do a little more research on, because it, it all comes back to the, really, this comes back to the well. My, the big concern for Zone 1 is the well at Hickory Hills, where there's discussion about, and I just got the paperwork on the way here, I haven't had a chance to review it or run it by anyone yet, about exactly how the easements function. I believe there's some disagreement between those residents' opinion and the Water District's opinion about how those function. Believe, I haven't gotten that confirmation, but it sounds like it from the actions everyone's taking. So, I'm going to be real, we could be looking at a change, we may be getting back into Zone 1, we may not. There's just a little more to tease out there, and whether or not truly necessary, I'm going to be frank, there might be a compromise to be reached to keep everyone happy, even if not, sometimes in bylaw crafting, it's about what's technically right, and sometimes you have something and go, well, it doesn't actually hurt it to have it in here, and this helps people understand what's going on even if it's not needed. So, other than that, this is here to improve, like actually give land rights back to landowners while doing at least as good, frankly, I think better, about protecting the environment than, in our water supply than we were previously.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Brenner, for that thorough update. Do we have any questions from the board related to it?
Just, just one, at the end, when you said this, do me some other things you may tease out, is that teasing out? Are you aiming for this town meeting to do that?
Yeah, the questions are very direct and focused. So, for example, there's people, there, there's a concern out there saying, but the bylaw no longer says we're allowed to boat in Zone 1. Well, first of all, it looks like Zone 1 doesn't apply on water, so it seems questionable if we can allow boating because people don't normally need permission to use a rowboat on their yard, but still worth looking at to be sure. Similarly, there are residents who are concerned about, who feel that by us removing Zone 1, we're removing a ban on building. It's my understanding, third hand, second, third hand, that the Water District feels they can build there regardless. So, I have to have a couple of conversations to tease out where everything is. Frankly, I may well hit up Attorney Costas' office hours if that falls at a reasonable timeframe for this, because there might be a little nitty-gritty there. But overall, the response from the public was, aside from Zone 1, people seem very comfortable with it. And there's that Zone 1 issue. Now, if we have to return Zone 1, we have, we have language for that, pop it right back in. If there is no need for Zone 1, we're going to get, for us to be in Zone 1, then we can get that confirmed as clearly as possible and bring that back to the constituency. So, I'm not going, I, I just want to be very real about where we are in the public hearing process. I don't want to come to you and say, oh, everything's 100% and be like, surprise, there could be a change here. But the only change we are foreseeing, to my understanding, is about whether or not we're going to be regulating Zone 1, and that would be very little because, again, DEP actually has most of the control there, if, or all the control.
So, I'm going to ask the same exact question again, because I don't think I've got. You're looking to do that before town meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Because, and the reason I say that is because I've been for this, I know the work, this is now the third time this will have come up, I would like to see this passed, and I see, I know the arguments that go on and on about, you know, you know, the small sections. I just don't, if anything changes after it is printed again, I just, I just pray that it doesn't start the same kind of circular discussion again.
Amen. No, the goal is to get this key aspect figured out.
Okay.
I believe it's going to be, from my understanding of the moving parts, I believe it's going to be more straightforward than people worry it will be. I haven't looked at this particular, but again, there are residents saying that there is a specific easement that is wildly different from any other easement in the state, and that the whole approval was, now, if everything's really insanely different, that could pivot everything. I'm not sure that's the case, but I have not had a chance to review what they've said because I've had it for an hour, and I was here with y'all.
So, I mean, if I can comment on just reality for a moment.
Yes.
If we think about, you know, we had a sidewalk recently, and it was regarding a water body, and it was very well-attended. The most people I've ever seen in a sidewalk, usually it's just Mr. Passios and the select board. When we think about the, you know, the, the town meeting that we had to move to the high school, it was regarding water and people who live on or around water as relates to taxes. And I think the one complaint we've received really loudly prior to that was related to the Conservation Commission also dealing with water. So, my comment is that I think that the times that I've seen the most people come about is when we're talking about property on or around water. So, if, if what the work is that needs to be done between now and town meeting is Zone 1, which specifically, I'm sure, is coming from residents in or around Hickory Hills with the well that's located there, do you think that a month is enough time to really resolve all these concerns? And would it be better to not have another iteration of this that fails and to instead take? And to instead take more time to resolve those concerns? Or do you perceive that those concerns are not
I perceive that, I perceive that these I don't wanna say I perceive that these concerns are not concerns, because they are. I don't believe, I believe they will be imminently addressable concerns. Either by being able to point to clear like explanation from people who understand the law saying, this is why you're okay. Or if there is an issue, by reinstituting control, the town's control over zone one. I I can't speak for the board, I can speak for myself. I'm not a fan of putting town control over zone one if we shouldn't have it. Because I don't know that that's super helpful for anyone. But if we do need it, that's a different story. And that we absolutely should.
Well, i- I guess what I'm trying to get a better understanding of is you guys are putting forward an article to go before the town while you're aware that a a section of the population is concerned about specific language not being included or included. So is is the move to put it on the warrant premature? Do you guys have more work to do that will take longer? And is this something that should come up later?
I do not, I believe that any, that if there is a fix needed here, it is very limited and very quick. So I do not believe this is premature. It's I wish some of these concerns had been brought to us earlier in the process so that we could have had longer conversations. But I don't think that, I think, I mean that really from a because it would have been a little less stressful standpoint. I believe we have plenty of time to address this because we're talking about an article that is ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent. People seem to, at this point, be comfortable with. There is one component that we can kind of effectively toggle if we need to. To me, that seems like a very reasonable fix. Requires a little more reading. Now, I'll also be honest, if it turns if it turns out this is wildly more complex than we thought, I might have a different, like, if it turns out we really are unique in the state with a very bizarre set of circumstances and there's agreement on that, I would probably have a different feeling. I don't anticipate that being an issue. But again, I haven't, I only just got that extra data, so I even haven't had a chance to review it yet.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board?
All right, you have another article, Article Y.
Yes.
Would you mind giving us a a a brief overview of what the purpose of Article Y is as relates to battery energy storage systems?
Yes, if we don't do it, companies can tell us what to do. I mean, that, if you want the real brief, uh the state has said because battery storage systems are necessary for solar power to be functional on the grid, they count as solar installations and get all the rights and benefits thereof. And if you're not go, Mr. Franco, you seem to have a question about that.
No, no, no.
Okay. And um and frankly, our feet are being very friend, in a friendly way, being put to the fire. And a company has come in and they're before, and they went to the ZBA and said, hey, you don't allow these systems right now in Lunenburg. And the state says you have to. So we're going to appeal. And, I mean, the writing's on the wall, they they'll get it, they can do what they want, most, is my understanding. Now, but they've also turned to us and said, hey, we don't have to just force this. We could actually work together and craft something that's good to the town and fair for the businesses in this area. I am personally very hesitant when government and business decide to work together on crafting legislation. I I I will say that so far they have been exceedingly good corporate citizens. They have given opinions. Mr. Harris has been an exceedingly good expert in this field. And he has done due diligence on behalf of the board in terms of when he gets recommendations from them, going to the appropriate experts within town and making sure that what's being shared with us flies. But overall, this legislation gives us some control over, really, a very fair amount of control, over battery storage systems. Making sure that, well, they're going to help us and give smoothness to the grid while not being a problem for the town, not being an eyesore, not being a a noise issue. And that's what this by, uh this uh potential bylaw is about.
Okay. And it sounds similar to what was going on with the solar when solar got passed and everyone was trying to jump in really quickly before it was regulated. Because there's always predatory businesses. You know, I probably don't agree with you fully when it comes to the crafting of legislation not being private business not being part of it. I think it actually works better. Usually, a lot of legislation is crafted by lobbyists and and others, people with unique and uh specific knowledge of an industry. And sometimes that leads to better legislation. Nonetheless, it sounds like, you know, as you've, just to summarize, as we're looking at it, you start off with definitions. So as you're using some language, I know this has been a shift in the planning board over the last ten years, a show to really start defining things. Um and so you start off with definitions, you go into the standards, then you kind of go down with all the different systems, where they're allowed, uh allowed to be. There's modifications here to use tables. And so clearly, a lot of work has gone into getting to this point. So that way, as we move forward, you know, we're not stuck in a situation where someone could be um putting one of these systems in. And then again, it's bothering their neighbors or something that's something, yeah, as you think of new technology that without the, without regulation, that will be treated differently than when we treat solar panels and other stuff.
I- i- if I may, uh one key difference between this and our previous solar bylaw is we've, or our current solar bylaw, is we've taken lessons learned from that about the rapid pace of technology. And this has been very intentionally crafted to be tech neutral, to rely on standards by bodies that actually observe, track and regulate these things. To do things like instead of limiting by kilowatt hour, limiting by uh footprint of the site or of the developed site. Because that's really what people care about. And we're not gonna get in that situation like now where ten, you know, ten thousand, uh what was it, ten kilowatt hour, ten thousand, whatever it is, used to be huge. And now you can throw it on your roof, right? But it's a large scale, but only if it's on the ground. That's the kind of stuff we're looking to avoid. So we're not re-crafting this in two, five, ten years.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Brenner?
I do have one, and that is, I have not read all thirteen pages of this bylaw. So I would ask you, I will, but I I will ask you, in your discussions, has there been much public input or concern about any component of this that, uh of which or to which we should pay particular attention?
There has been very li- I cannot think of any just kind of freely offered public input where people have come in and said, hey. The, one second. No, we have soli- we have solicited opinions from officials in the town, from groups in the town. Green communities, for example. But no, overall, this is, um, there has not been a big public response about this at all.
Thank you.
Any remaining questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brenner.
Thank you.
All right. All right. So the only thing remaining on our agenda this evening is for the select board to review the annual town meeting warrant articles and vote and recommendations. Uh I'm assuming that we still have people here because they're waiting to see how we're gonna be voting.
And discussion budget updates.
Yes. Why don't we um, why don't we actually just um go to number two? So that way, Mr. Costa can uh can head home and be with his family if he needs to. I don't think he needs to be here for number one. So if we can just go to number two, I'll turn to the town manager.
His family's gonna be sleeping.
Yeah.
I don't know if he needs, wants to be here for number one either. It's just a budget update if um it's up to to Mr. Costa. So just to provide the board an update, I know many of you are well aware of the conversations that we've been having. The chair and I with the school committee chair and the superintendent. And we have closed that gap. So we had a meeting on Monday. The final gap was approximately forty-one thousand dollars. And I had been looking at local receipts as a way to close that gap. As you know, my budgeting approach and um as history with Karen Broshu as well, we both have always agreed on this, that we budget conservatively, purposely. Those revenues are elastic revenues. Uh they fluctuate over time. Um that's proven by the the data of, um are estimated to actuals and um how they fluctuate. But um when I did look back, I'm comfortable with closing the gap by that that amount. But I want to just forewarn, this is not a fix, you know, that we should be looking at every time we need to look to close a budget gap. The more we rely on those funds and lessen that those actual amounts, the less we're gonna have for capital, the less we're gonna have for, to put in our stabilization fund to address OPEB. So, and those are creating healthy financial reserves for the town, which also helps us when we need to go out to borrow, which we have on the horizon. So I do want uh to put that disclaimer out there. This is not a a be all and all fix for all our problems. The other updates, um so uh unrelated. So as you know, in the preliminary budget proposal, there were various positions where with increases in hours, um including the meal site manager that was referenced in public comment tonight, the IT administrative assistant position, the rec director position, and the part-time assessor, data collector position, and a half-year position for the police department. And due to recent um conversations with E.L. Harvey regarding our contract and the potential for it to significantly increase, what they quoted when we had met with them uh two weeks ago was that it's up to a seventy percent increase if we wanted to extend that contract. So we are gonna be putting up that contract or that out to bid to say we, what we do get for proposals, but it simultaneously, we're looking at moving to a cart system because that would be less labor intensive for their business. And um it may save the town money. And all businesses in that, the hauling businesses are pretty much forcing the industry to go that that route. There, there's companies that won't even bid on towns that aren't using a tote cart system. So um I wanted to make sure that we're prepared because we are contract was up June thirtieth, but we submitted a letter to extend the terms of our contract by ninety days. So it, our rate will be until the end of September. But in the meantime, we don't have a town meeting between, typically between May and November. We need to be prepared for what that impact is. And we can't enter it into a contract without an appropriation. So what um I came, I tried as best I could to work the numbers to make it all work, but it just does not work. We need to pull back on those hours and positions at this time to plan for that impact as well as the impact of the salary administration plan, wage impact for FY twenty-five.
Okay. So those total, total dollar amounts that we talked about previously, it was like a hundred ninety-five thousand-ish in that range, correct?
Hundred and fifty thousand for those positions with health insurance.
So it would be eliminating all those ads and reallocating a hundred fifty thousand dollars to trash?
It would, no. Um so the only position that is retained in the budget right now is the part-time data collector position, because I feel very strongly that's um a corrective action we need to take for that department. And it's the financial backbone besides our finance office and getting tax bills out to make sure we're getting our income, um our revenue generated from the tax levy. So
And the grant writer?
The grant, uh it's not a grant writing, writer. It's grant service that can be used for, I mean, so that, that is also in the the budget, but it's not a position, it's a line item for that, which we, um, I think there's consensus around that remaining in the budget based on the return on investment for that cost. And um there's a minimal amount under the seasonal cemetery positions, about two thousand dollars to add that, uh to address the needs of that department. But that's, doesn't affect benefits and it's very miniscule. So the reallocation is a hundred thousand to the solid waste line. Added a hundred thousand from free cash to the reserve fund, which I normally, that's not a practice I endorse or have ever used. But I think we're, it should be earmarked for emergency only. And if we go out to bid and we need to rely on that as an additional supplemental appropriation for the trash contract, it's there if we need it um before the November town meeting. And um the salary reserve line was at a hundred thousand. But um based on the SAP impact, the wage impact, at around a hundred and eleven. We also need to budget for the DPW union negotiations that will be forthcoming this year. So that number, I'm increasing to one fifty-five.
Questions to the town manager related to that update?
Just one comment. I understand all the adjustments that she described, both verbally here and in the sheet. I will just say that if there is a way as we get closer, the two, the two things that in my mind would be the first to add back. First of all, I couldn't agree more with the assessor's data collection line. So the better data we get to keep our properties in line and not lose revenue to people doing things and not being accounted for, that is good money to to, it'll more than pay for itself with the five thousand dollars. So that would be the first one I hope would be put in. And the uh issue made during public comment about the meal site manager would be the second. Because again, it is a, an area where some seniors and and it was a presentation yesterday given, hosted by the Board of Assessors at the Adult Activity Center that both Mr. Franco and I attended and spoke in regarding tax exemptions and abatements, et cetera. And this is a vulnerable population and, you know, for that amount of money to give the assistance that is given there, not only in the meal itself, but in the social aspect of it, I think is well taken. So those are the, hopefully, those would be the two that we could find our way potentially to put back in. Those would be my heart, highest priorities to put back in.
I'd just like to reiterate that. You beat me to it, Tom. And um that's it. I mean, if there is no way, there is no way. But if there is a way, those would be my priorities as well.
Yeah, I'd agree.
Concur. Any other comments, thoughts? Thank you to the town manager for the work you've done. Um, you know, ordinarily, as these numbers come in, you know, money kind of moves around a little differently. But we understand with the strain and focus this year, you know, we make do with what we have. Do we have any other um questions related to the budget? The last thing that we're gonna be doing here is going by article, up by article to identify as many things that we can vote on uh for recommendations. Uh do we have any other things related to the budget this year, next year, capital plan, annual town meeting warrant? Okay. So what we'll do is we'll go A through Z. Um and um if the town manager puts them up on the screen so we don't have to so we don't have to read all of them out loud, that will be helpful. And then we'll kind of just go, I know the town manager has her notes. Do you want, are you taking them or do you want me to? Or do you want Caesar to?
If Caesar can.
All right. So the notes Caesar are going to be by article.
Yep.
Whether or not we vote to recommend or not recommend, what that vote is, or if we're saying that we want to wait till the next meeting, or if we're deferring. And I'm expecting that we're going to wait till next meeting for a couple of these things. So I'll start the process. And any member who wants to defer at any time to say defer, and in our pattern or tradition is generally to defer based on the recommendation of a member.
Mr. Chair, if I may, do we not first need to take a vote on whether or not we are putting it on?
We should.
Yes.
Yep. So do you want to make the motion? Because I'll make most of them tonight to make it easier.
Can we make a motions like the following? To the extent that the board agrees, we recommend approval of a warrant article, that also constitutes a vote to place it on the warrant.
I would say, why don't we just go ahead and move to accept A through Z onto the warrant? That may be.
I, okay.
Want to make it?
That's way too simple, man. I move to that the board place articles A through Z on the town meeting warrant.
Second. Any additional discussion? All right. For the purpose tonight, I'm going to say all in favor instead of as many as are in favor because that's easier to say. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. All have been accepted. All right. We're going to go one by one, starting with A. See if the vote will hear, I move for the town to recommend approval of Article A.
Second.
I want to see for the board. We have a motion. The second, any additional discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Board is five to zero. Article B, see if the town will vote to authorize revolving funds for departments, boards, committees, agencies, officers, et cetera, as on the screen. I move for the board to recommend approval of Article B.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Board is five to zero. C, local wetlands protection bylaw fees.
Just another revolving fund, right?
Yes.
It is. It's, it was discovered recently that there's a reference in the local wetlands bylaw referencing a revolving fund that does not exist in our bylaws.
We thought it'd be good to have one to reference it, yeah.
And just for notes, since last time, we didn't have that dollar amount. Do we just want to say that's fifty thousand?
It's fifty thousand. It's on the
Okay. Move for the board to recommend approval of Article C.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Board is five to zero. D, this is raise and appropriate available sums for prior expenses. We don't have a number, so we will wait till next meeting to see if we have an update on this one. E, this is related to the budget. This is also likely going to be deferred, but we'll wait till the next meeting on this one as well. F, town will vote to raise an appropriate borrow. This is related to the capital plan. We do have those numbers, but they're not here yet. So let's hit F next week. G, appropriate transfer available sums, a sum of money to defray the charges and expenses of the town for fiscal year twenty-five, to fix the salaries compensation of elected officials of the town, and any other items included in the budget of the town manager. I think we need to see the numbers on this one, or do you, are you able?
That's the new budget.
That's the budget. That's on the budget.
Another one is the previous budget.
That's right. Previous and current. So we are, we're going to wait till next week. H, this is, see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate additional sum of money to supplement the, this is the override question. Anyone want to make a positive motion on this one tonight?
I, I would prefer to, I mean, I want to see what comes, finally comes out of the sausage, the school committee sausage grinder.
I, my understanding was that the number is nine forty-eight, one thirty-six. It'd be confirmed tomorrow, but I don't, from what we heard tonight, the number's not going to move too much.
Well, then it doesn't hurt to wait till Tuesday.
So the board wants to wait till next week?
Doesn't matter. I mean, I'd vote for it either way.
I thought they were going to discuss where the extra money was going to go.
Okay. Will your vote for recommendation change based on that additional information?
I don't know.
Okay. So we'll wait till next week. Aye. See if the town will vote to amend the Code of Lumber, Chapter Seventy, Schedule A, entire salary admin plan. This is what we heard tonight. I move for the board to recommend approval of Article A.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Board is five to zero on A. J, this is related to the salary admin plan, the actual dollar amount. I move for the board to recommend approval.
I would like to hold this till, I just got the chart today, so I'd like to at least review it before I vote on a money thing right now.
We will wait till next week for I. Excuse me, for J. K, this is related to sick leave that we heard tonight. I move for the board to, and I will clarify that as the town manager noted tonight, employees can accrue twelve hundred hours. That's approximately six months. But for K, I think earlier I said six weeks.
Six weeks.
But it's, but it's six months. So for K, I move for the board to recommend approval of Article K.
Second.
Second.
I thought you wanted to have some language clarified at the end? No? Did you not ask them?
We did. We did. Thank you for that. We will wait till next week on K.
On second.
On second?
I unseconded that.
Second was removed. L, this is related to available sums, a sum of money for regarding the stabilization fund. We need to get those dollar amounts. We'll wait till next week. M, this is related.
To a hundred thousand.
Thank you. We have a hundred thousand, so we can move on L. L's, the town will vote to raise and appropriate roughly a hundred thousand dollars to stabilization fund. I move for the board to recommend approval of Article L.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, the board is five to zero. M, do we have a number for M's special purpose stabilization?
Two hundred and fifty thousand from free cash.
As, okay, as discussed, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the special purpose stabilization fund, two hundred and fifty thousand. I move for the board to recommend approval of Article M.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The board is five to zero on M. N, this is related to OPEB. Do we have the number for OPEB?
Yes, it's in that chart. It's one eighty-seven.
All right.
One ten, I think.
Just, just, we can pause.
I'm sharing the screen where I would look.
All right. Just for a pause for a moment. If you wouldn't mind just clarifying what, I know we go through this every year, what is OPEB for some people at home and for our newer members' benefit?
Other post-employment benefits.
So it's a fund that we have to, that we dip into as needed. All right. And the amount was a hundred eighty-seven?
One eighty-seven, one ten. If someone else can bring up the chart that's in the adjustment chart.
I move for the board to recommend approval of Article N.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Board is five to zero. O, see if the town will vote to raise, we're looking for sewer enterprise. Do we have the dollar amount for the sewer enterprise for FY twenty-five?
Yes, also.
We'll come back to O next week. P, P is thirty-five for the sewer capital reserve stabilization fund. I move for the board to recommend approval of Article P.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The board's five to zero on P. Q, this is related to solid waste disposal fund. We'll wait till next week. Do we have that number? R is water enterprise fund. We'll wait till next week. Do we have that number? S is the peg. We'll wait till next week. Do we have that number? T is related to the ten thousand of the solid cemetery laws. I move for the board to recommend approval of Article T.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The board's unanimous, five to zero on T. U, this is the town will vote to accept Mass General Law, which provides for additional real estate exemptions. This is the presentation that we heard. I'll just go ahead and read it.
No, the second one is.
Yeah. So I'll go ahead and read it. This is related to what provides for additional real estate exemptions for taxpayers who are granted personal exemptions on their domiciles under Mass General Law, Chapter Fifty-nine, Section Five, including certain blind persons, veterans, surviving spouses and seniors, and provide that the additional exemption shall be up to fifty percent of the personal exemption to be effective for exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning order after July the first, two thousand and twenty-four. And again, this is for blind persons, veterans, and surviving spouses and seniors. I believe we previously had information on this. Is the board prepared to make a recommendation on this tonight? I move for the board to recommend.
Dismay change, depending on something the assessors are looking into right now.
So let's hold off till next week?
Yes.
Okay. You could have interrupted me a lot.
Well, he's trying to.
Well, you're racist. I felt like we were at a cattle auction. I think I bought it.
And we don't have final wording on vague.
All right. So V, we're coming back to as well. W, W is related to re-adopting and accepting the provisions of Chapter Twenty of, I'll go ahead and read this one. This is also related to OPEB. I don't think we've, have we had a presentation on W?
I've explained it briefly. So basically, it's a section of, changes were made to the section of law that were after the town originally adopted the OPEB trust fund. So this would align with the government standards to create a declaration of trust and associated documents. Can I explain that?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So you're explaining it correctly. The difference is, in most instances where a statute changes and you've adopted the statute, the changes affect you. When they made amendments to this statute, they said specifically that the old statute shall continue to apply unless you re-adopt it.
Got it.
And this is something, we're going through that process with the Division of Local Services to look at updating our financial policies. This is going to be something they recommend us do. So we're getting ahead of that as well.
Okay. Does the board need more time on W?
Nope.
Move for the board to recommend approval of Article W.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The board is unanimous, five to zero. X, this is related to amending the Code of Lumber, Chapter Twelve, entitled Boards, Commissions and Committees by adding a new Article Four thereto. This is related to the Historical Commission, the article that was proposed by the Select Board. Specifically, I think the language came from Selectman Alonso. I move for the board to recommend approval of Article X.
Second.
Any additional discussion?
Yeah. Do we need to wait to clarify what the previous speaker brought up in public comment or no?
Mr. Passios, since you're here. I didn't hear the whole question. Dave Passios, fifty-six whiting.
Have you had the opportunity to look at the bylaw that Selectman Alonso, that the Select Board is proposing to amend?
Oh, yeah. It's in your packet. Obviously, I have.
And, and just for clarity, the bylaw as currently proposed, do you have concerns with that language?
Yes, because I don't know a hundred percent for sure, after speaking with Town Council yesterday, as to whether or not we need to re-accept the paragraph in Chapter Forty also in this article. Or if I have, if I understood our conversation correctly yesterday, if that section has not changed since nineteen seventy-nine, then we've already accepted it, in which case the verbiage in that paragraph, I, my understanding was should be in force at this time. Correct. Please correct me if I'm wrong.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. So Mr. Passios and I did have an opportunity to speak about this at some length yesterday. And I'll be, I'll be candid, that was at about three or four PM. And I've barely come up for air since then. So I have not done any further research into the questions that we left that meeting with. But the short version is, the concerns, and I think I'm characterizing this correctly, the concerns that Mr. Passios raised are that the statute's fairly comprehensive in terms of its language. Based upon Mr. Alonso's prior research, which was provided to me, the town previously accepted the statute, but that was back in nineteen seventy-nine. I don't know what the statute said in nineteen seventy-nine or whether it's been amended since then. The current version of the statute is more comprehensive than what's proposed here. It includes certain references. For example, one thing Mr. Passios pointed out is that it says in a community with a town manager form of government, it's a town manager appointee subject to Select Board confirmation as opposed to a Select Board appointment. And so the question was, would this bylaw provision conflict with what the statute requires? Or could we make an argument that maybe the statute that was adopted by the town back in nineteen seventy-nine was an earlier version of the statute, which I have not yet been able to research. So to the extent the board is inclined to not vote on a recommendation tonight, I can certainly do that research and get an answer to the board before its next meeting.
Thank you, Attorney Costa. We will do that. We'll pick this up for next week on X.
If I may, just very quickly. The other piece that's in there, obviously, is the alternates that we spoke about a week or two ago. And I did check APDC and Zoning Board of Appeals, both have that in their sections that we've adopted. I'll wee bit at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Passios. For, we will wait till next week on X. For Y and Z, I believe the board needs an opportunity to read this. In total, they come to about twenty pages between the two. You know, right now, our booklet's twenty-eight pages and twenty of them is planning board.
And, Mr. Chair, I think the public hearing was continued.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah.
So there could be additional modifications. So we'll wait till next week on Y and Z.
I think the public hearing was April eighth. Yeah. So it's going to be after your really.
For both, I move for the board to defer Articles Y and Z to town meeting.
Yeah. Second.
Any additional discussion? As many as are, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Board has deferred to town meeting a recommendation on Y and Z. Okay. All right. So next week, we will meet again, and we will finish the ones that we pushed off for next week. And then there will, I fully expect that the board will be prepared to make a recommendation on I, which, and this current iteration is the override question. What typically happens, just, I'm commenting to the public mostly, then to the board, what typically happens is a couple of articles get deferred to town meeting, in which the information will not become available until such a time that will be after the warrant gets printed and mailed. I will urge the board to make as many recommendations as possible and to defer as few as possible. And then in this process, then as we go through April, we then come up, once the Finance Committee makes their recommendations, we end up coming up with a consent calendar with, with articles that we find to be pretty non-injectionable and straightforward and should pass. And then typically, the process is that we identify them. And then in the town meeting process, the first thing, one of the first things we do is lump all them together and get them to bulk pass. And then we focus on the controversial or articles that have a lot more engagement.
So do we, we voted on the warrant article for the override?
Correct.
What about the ballot question?
We have next week. So
Is that what, we're going to do it next week?
Yes. Yep. Because we need to see all the other things that are on the ballot anyway. So we should have the draft. There is one thing, though, so I will note, next week, we should be pretty quick about it. But last week, we did receive from the register of voters, a request related to in-person voting. So we do have to post that as a public hearing? That is, was that the question?
I think that was the one.
So we do have to post it as a public hearing, and we do have that scheduled to be next week. And so we will
We were supposed to get clarification from the language because what we got presented was contradictory in itself.
So I apologize if
I spoke with Town Council about it yesterday. So we do have to have the public hearing.
Yeah.
It'll be Tuesday. Yanni is taking care of the notice.
Yep.
And the board has to vote on the, that the, to opt out of the mail, voting by mail.
So we're not doing voting by mail for the town election?
Correct.
That's what you need to vote on at a public hearing.
Yes.
Right. But you, but if you didn't, you only have to have a hearing if you're opting out. I mean, otherwise, the default is you're in, right?
Mm-hmm.
That was what was confusing the language, okay?
So, and the request is for us to opt out, is for us not to allow early in-person voting and to not allow the mail-in voting and instead to defer back to the
Mail, by mail, the, the pub, opt out by mail.
Opt out of the mailing voting.
Yes, correct. Not by the early voting.
I thought it was early in-person as well was the request.
No.
Mr. Costa?
I don't know that I've actually seen the request, but
But that should not, that should not preempt you from
Well, can you comment it on any way?
All right. So we have a public hearing next week to go over that.
I did pull it up, and it is changes to early voting by mail and in-person early voting.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
I thought it was both.
It doesn't change absentee voting.
Correct. Absentee voting is always permitted, which is you have a justified reason by law. This is really kind of reverting back to the pre-pandemic rules that we were operating under, which was not allowing early in-person voting and voting by mail. It would be absentee instead. So the request is for us to opt out of this. You know, I want to, I'm inclined to support that request. So I definitely want us to have the public hearing and then for us as a board to vote on it, on whether or not we will support it or not. There were some language concerns. And Adam, as you're looking at this, there were some verbiage issues with how it was initially phrased to us. And so they did have a
No, that's, that's helpful.
They did have a modification that came, did the modification not go to the whole board? That only come to me?
I didn't see anything.
I didn't see it.
I apologize. It must have only come to me. I will I apologize. It must have only come to me. I will forward that to the rest of the board.
So I'm just reading what I'm looking at. I don't know who wrote it or what the source is.
There's some errors in it, Adam.
Well, that's fine. So I'm looking at the first reference, so, and I say this because the voting, the early voting by mail and the in-person early voting are two entirely different things that are governed by different statutes. And so what I opined on, and what I discussed with the town manager, was what many communities have opted to do, I shouldn't say many, some communities, which is to opt out of the early voting by mail. And so that's because the Votes Act, which was adopted a couple of years ago, said that all communities are required to provide it unless the selectmen conduct a public hearing, and they opt out. And so that's consistent with the language that's written here, which says, "Early voting by mail is not required for all elections and preliminaries." It should say, it shouldn't say not. It should say, should say, "Early voting by mail is required"
Right, that's what we said.
"for all local elections, unless the town opts out." So that's what it should say. "In order to opt out of an early vote by mail for a local election," I'm just reading, "the Select Board must hold a public hearing and a public roll-call vote to not allow early vote by mail no later than 45 days before the date of the election." That's accurate, and that's what I discussed with the town manager. But then it refers to a separate section. Maybe it's within the Votes Act, maybe it's not. But it says, "The towns may choose to have in-person early voting. To opt in to earn in-person early voting for municipal elections, at least two registrars need to recommend it, and the Select Board must then vote to authorize in-person early voting." That's my understanding of it as well, although I have not looked at that provision of the Act recently. But that's an opt-in provision. So if you've already opted in, then you've already opted in. And you could reverse that vote, but you're already in.
We haven't opted in.
Then you're not in anyway. So there may not be no vote required there, if you're not currently offering it, because it was never, it was never voted.
Got it. Okay. For anyone who wasn't confused.
Yeah, when you said "got it," I was like, you do?
No, no, I got it. I followed that. So, I will forward to the board the clarification that came in from the Register of Voters. I apologize that I didn't verify that you guys went on the CC line. And they will, and they did provide that clarification. And then, Adam, if you wouldn't mind just giving, I think you said that opinion to us, but if you wouldn't mind writing that opinion to us briefly, that'd be helpful, so that way, next week when we meet, we have clear guidance on what it is that we're expecting.
That's fine. I've written the first part already. It was sent to the town manager, but I'll confirm the second part, and I'll update it.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I may, before Town Council hits his remote start on his car.
Let's do mine.
I'd like to go back to Article V for a moment, because I have a question regarding this. My understanding, and with, you know, at my encouragement-
And just for clarity, for those who aren't following along, ours, V is the-
I'm gonna, yeah. Okay, so this is, this is the one about decreasing the age of the exemptions for the under 41(c) from 70 to 65. That's what it currently says. Partially at my urging, I know that there's now interest by the Board of Assessors to also include the other thing that they considered, which was raising the exemption amount from $750 to $1,000. So, I assume they can come back and still do that, or we can, we can do that. Correct? We can, we-
You can alter the warrant article up until the time that-
Okay, yeah, but, okay, but it's not, okay, right. So, my question for you is this. If we put that in there, then it's a package, right? Like, if it's in one warrant article, either both or none happens. Once that's put back in, can we bootstrap and actually divide that out into two different warrant articles? Is that even an option? In other words, to, so that those provisions could be considered separately and not risk both of them tanking?
If I can add to your question before you answer it, Adam, I think the also, other way of thinking of this is, if they make an amendment to V, can we also separate that amendment?
That's what I'm getting at. In other words, I know we can't add a warrant article now, just throw one on there, but can we add something to it into an existing article, and then split that article?
Isn't that the same thing as the first option?
I think the answer was, it's a different way of thinking of it.
It is, but it's a baby technical way of getting around meditation.
Yes. I agree.
So my recommendation would be, if you're anticipating a couple of months before Town Meeting, that there may be a desire, before you've closed the warrant, I mean, you asked me this question on the eve of Town Meeting. I may give you, you know, I may try to find a solution for you that works with what I've got. But when you tell me before you've closed the warrant, that you've got one warrant article, that you may want to actually divide into two warrant articles in the future, and you want to know if you can do it, I'm gonna tell you the safer thing to do is place it as two warrant articles now.
The warrant's closed already. But we haven't-
Well, the warrant's closed, but it's your warrant as a Select Board, so you can divide one article into 10 articles if you want to. That's within your discretion. It's always your warrant as a Select Board. So you could, you could convert that, if you chose, to two separate articles. What I was gonna say is, and with the answer that I would give if you asked me this on the eve of Town Meeting, would be moderator's discretion. The moderator can certainly bifurcate a vote. Moderators do things like this with some frequency. They'll allow discussion to happen on two related articles, and then you vote them separately. This is a little different, because you are voting components of the same warrant article possibly separately, and that concerns me a bit. I have no issue with you amending the article that's on the floor to delete one piece of it or the other piece of it, but then you're left with the piece you voted, and the other piece is out, and you can't vote that other piece, unless the moderator were to determine that you can vote them separately, but it's really still one article. So, it gives me some concern that when this gets to the Attorney General, they're gonna say that you were a bit too cute with how you went about it. So my recommendation would be to place it as two separate sequential articles, one changing the age and one changing the dollar amount. And again, you can speak to the moderator in advance at our pre-Town Meeting, as we always do, about, it may make sense to discuss these collectively, so that they're both read, and then the discussion is on both articles, but then when they're voted, they're voted separately.
That's clear to me.
Yeah, no, I think, you're, so, yes, we could do this strategy, but it's the timing of the strategy.
Your strategy of putting it into a single article, and then hoping that it can be voted in separate parts, so you don't sort of throw the baby out with the bathwater kind of, kind of analogy, I'm just concerned that the moderator may be uncomfortable with that. It's not something we've ever done in Lunenburg before, at least not in the years I've been here. And so, trying those sort of unique things is gonna raise a red flag for the AG when they're looking over the votes at Town Meeting.
Let me just clarify. No, I mean, like, literally, sitting at this table, like, at 7:30, we add in this other provision into V, and then at 7:00, and take a vote on that. And then at 7:31, we take a vote to split it up into two articles.
I think what Adam's saying is, and this is my understanding as well, is that we can add another article here.
Okay.
And that the Board of Assessors cannot, but we can. And, and that if we're looking at, you know, the new W, right, which is the provision, that that can just be added.
Okay.
My opinion is, and you can disagree, and I know this may not be custom, but my opinion is consistently, in all of the communities that I represent, that you select opening and closing dates for the warrant for your convenience. There's nothing in the law that requires that specifically, for your convenience, so that you can get the warrant out in a timely manner, get it printed, get it out to the households. But it's always your warrant. So until the moment when you vote to approve the full warrant, you can add, you could add entirely new articles on topics that were not even discussed prior to the close of the warrant, because per statute, per 3910, it's your warrant.
Mr. Chair, just to weigh in on this. First of all, to what Town Council has said, I, I wouldn't be in favor of that for something like this. I know that we can do it, but there's a difference between what you can do and what you should do. And if we're gonna tell people that it's closed, there's no emergency. In an emergency situation, it's good to have that kind of power to be able to do it. I don't think this rises to that. Number two, I don't understand, like, you know, Mr. Franco's concern, because if we have two components that he wants to add, and we add both of them into the current article, somebody can always amend to remove one.
Sure.
Or not. I mean, so, having two articles would just, I mean, just add another article to go through. And I don't understand why, what it would do that one article couldn't do, because you could remove one or both, or change one or both at that time anyway. And that would be an amendable vote, that would be a separate vote, not a separate article, but it'd be a separate vote.
Sure.
Is the Board of Assessors gonna meet between now and next Tuesday to give us an amendment on this article?
I don't actually know, but, I mean, I, we could just do it ourselves, if we wanted to.
Then it's submitted by, then that changes who it's submitted by.
Yeah, well, that's true, yep. I don't know if they're meeting.
Okay.
Jack will probably get in his truck and come down.
What, if we can just talk, what's the best approach, as the board sees it, to, to handle this request that came up from the board during their conversation with us? To let them come back again at another future point, to amend the existing, or to add an article?
I don't know how many people it would affect. Certainly, we're changing one, that would be substantial, the age difference. That's my personal opinion, but I'm not against, as I said then, I would be for it if they are for it. Again, I don't feel like meddling in an article submitted by another elected board. If they want to come to us, I'm in favor of it, but I'm not willing to add it on our own, for me.
Would it have an impact on the budget, or would this also-
This affects the overlay, and they've said it would be covered.
Currently, but if we added the extra however much, would that also come out of overlay?
Any exemptions and abetements come out of the overlay, or is there-
Some. I don't know what, we don't know. I don't have a dollar amount. But it would have some, yes.
To your point, Mr. Alonso, now it's kind of like, the other thing, like, instead of, and to yours, Mr. Jeffries, instead of amending and fiddling with an article that the Board of Assessors submitted, we could just keep that one intact and add another article.
And?
And have it be our own article.
To say, to reiterate something the Town Council said, you could presumably, and unless it, would you think it was illegal? I know you're gonna say it's up to the moderator to some degree, but if we, if it was printed one way, and we wanted to, if somebody amended to add the second criteria in, would that be up to the town moderator, or would that?
So that becomes a scope issue, right?
Right, that's what I mean.
So initially, it's always up to the moderator. Experience in Lunenburg, as the moderator tends to confer with me, I have some concern about the scope there. I understand it's the same exemption, but when you're adding in an entirely different basis for the exemption, and it's not now monetary, but it's age, or it's not age, but it's monetary, it changes, changes the substance of the article, I think, so I'd be concerned. Yeah, I know, sorry.
So let's wait to hear from the Board of Assessors.
Let's wait, I think we should wait to hear from the Board of Assessors.
Okay.
And they can, they have plenty of time to get back to us before next Tuesday at 7:00 PM, so. I know several members are watching, so.
As a side note, I want to congratulate both of the newest members for putting their name up for reelection. That was-
Oh!
Both, both Ms. Cameron and Mr. LaFond.
Excellent, excellent. That's good to hear. And they've done such good work so far, so. All right, I think we are done with our supposedly abbreviated agenda tonight, and I think I even took off action items and all of this. Anyway, our upcoming meeting schedule. So the board will be meeting next Tuesday, April 9th. We will be skipping April 16th, which is a week of school vacation, and then we will meet again on April 23rd. We have any public comments this evening from the town manager?
None, thank you.
Any public comments from the public? Mr. Passios, then I, did TJ have his hand up? All right, then TJ.
Dave Passios, 56 Whiting Street. The earlier discussions that you had with the Personnel Committee members, and their move to try to mitigate the issue with sick leave and vacation time, I think this is a good first step, and a quick fix for something that needed to get fixed right away for a particular reason. But I think it needs to have a deeper dive done into it. Private industry uses PTO, Paid Time Off, and that paid time off you can use for any eligible use, including vacation time, sick leave, and I think there's a third one, I can't remember what it is. The only difference between the two or three that you can use that accrued time for is that you have to notify the employer with more notice for vacation time versus sick leave, so on and so forth. I think the system is archaic, what we have, and I know this challenges because of collective bargaining agreements, so on and so forth. But I really think it needs to have a deep dive into that type of a program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Passios. TJ?
TJ Loughlin, 207 Rolling Acres Road. Gonna be short. You guys have all heard me talk too much, of course. But I just wanted to point something out that I think was important to point out. The town manager said something tonight that I was, about the school budget that I was really happy about, and agreed with her. She didn't increase health insurance costs, or transportation costs, or collaborative tuition costs. She didn't. She's right. But neither did the superintendent, or the chair of the school committee. Nor did that happen because the superintendent used Google Sheets and didn't use another budgeting tool, right? But tonight was the first time I've heard recognition that those are actual problems across the many boards in town that need to recognize those as actual problems. I thought that was refreshing, actually. I would like to see the boards in town recognize these undeniable problems we face. And because we didn't collectively, together, I actually think it does put the superintendent in a position to take the criticism you mentioned from the fringe. I think it puts her in that position quite often. And it puts the override in the same light, and the school budget as a whole, not even just the override, right? I think it's really important to, to understand the override and the comments you mentioned in that light of what does support, or lack of support, or recognition of the core problems. Recognition as core problems, not recognition as a political viewpoint or a message. But I am genuinely hoping that Board Member Mkey's task force will get us there to that recognition together. I really am. You saw it in our letter. It's a truth, it's a true thing. It wasn't just a message. I do wish we got there collectively months ago, when the superintendent flagged it publicly, with numbers backing it. But that's okay. Here we are. And I also agree that saying positive is important, that I keep hearing people talk about. But I do think supporting our schools positively is important as well. So I look forward to making progress for our town and our schools together. Thank you.
Thank you, TJ. TJ, I need to, I have to say, I'm so impressed with the group, that we need to get you guys on a board or commission. So you can keep-
Civil Kaufman, 27 OCEV. So, Mr. Franco suggested that more-
Am I just saying your name again?
I did. Civil Kaufman, 27 OCEV, Blue House.
Really fast.
Okay. Mr. Franco, you really want more people to run for office. Make it so we can. Who here has kids in school right now? They're in bed right now at my house, because I have a partner who thinks that I'm right to come here and be exhausted, and wake up at 5:00, and go to my full-time job. You guys have the power to make it easier for us to be involved. Right now, it's super hard. These meetings are very long. Even though they're posted online, it's hard for citizens to find out. My husband couldn't, I mean, he's a very smart person. He couldn't find the link and gave up. Like, it's really hard to get involved in Lunenburg town politics. I see that face. It's-
Yeah, he should be able to find the agenda.
Yeah, and I'll teach him how to do that, but it takes someone telling someone else how to do it. It's not intuitive. The website's a little clunky. The calendar doesn't get updated until whenever. So, like, you know, if I was gonna go to a school committee meeting that's new, I have to go to the Lunenburg calendar, which now thankfully Google and my browser knows that that's what I'm starting to type in. When I put in LU, it shows me the calendar for Lunenburg. I would love it if we talked about childcare, if we talked about meetings at different times, if we talked about the chairs of our committees holding the members accountable to speak at reasonable lengths. We, as public speakers, are kept to three-minute lengths, right? Where we're supposed to be. We're supposed to be held accountable to a three-minute time section, right? So, let's do that for everyone. Let's democratize the process. So I'm just saying, like, I would love to get more involved and run for, for an office if it would fit my life. That's not what Lunenburg looks like anymore, okay? And I hear people talking about 30% of the town are on fixed income. That's an outdated statistic. I'm a mom. I'm a full- I'm a mom, I'm a full-time working mom with kids in school who are little, who I want to see before they go to bed, who I want to see in the morning. I'm not going to get to because I have to leave the house before they're awake tomorrow morning. You could make it easier, so there's that. Okay. Okay, good night.
And you did open this can of worms, so I am going to add that the last three people who were parents on this board exited for various reasons. So it has not been a welcoming environment for parents on this board, and you can talk about all three of them having different issues of maybe not getting along with people, but that's a fact, is, you know, the last three people who left, at least some of the last three people who left this board were parents. So I, you know, I think three is a trend.
Any other public comments from the public?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry for dragging this out. I know we want to go home, I'm so tired. Laura Bozowski, 21 Francis Ave. I'm on the school committee, but I'm here as Laura and not the school committee member. But I am going to, again, ask you guys to please support the override as a parent. We need money to run the schools. We need enough money to run the schools. It is hard to run the schools without enough money. There were going to be drastic cuts this year, and I am so appreciative that we've kept it from being too drastic. There's still going to be cuts if the override doesn't pass. So I am asking you as a parent, I've got kids in the school system, I am a citizen of Lunenburg, and I like living in a town with educated citizens. And I know some of you graduated from Lunenburg schools and are proud of that. I think it's fair, I think it would be fair to let the kids who are students now also have a chance to be proud, to be students of Lunenburg. Having one year underfunded, I mean, we've been, I'm so tired, I'm sorry. We've, we've been low-funded for a while, having even one year, waiting till next year. While I think that next year we do need to do the task force and examine town finances, even one year makes a big difference in the life of a student. That's one year where they're not getting all the support they need, and they're not getting all the programming they need, and they're not getting the teachers, and they're not getting the staff that they need. So I'm asking you guys again to please support the override. Your opinion matters a lot. Most of the objections I've heard from people who don't support the override is, well, the select board doesn't support it, you know, they've spoken out against it. And I know that you guys haven't actually specifically said that, but that's the attitude. So I am begging you guys to please get behind the override and just help fund the schools for next year. We would deal with the other stuff after the election, and I cannot wait for a task force, but I'm worried about next year, so I'm begging you guys to please support the override. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any additional public comments from the public? Anyone on Zoom? Let's just check Zoom.
No.
Nope. Anyone else? All right, any public comments on the board?
Just an announcement that tomorrow there's school committee meeting, and then on Thursday is the public hearing of the finance committee where they will go over every article. So packed lunches, dinners. The last few have ended somewhere around 11:00, 11:30-ish, so I'm assuming that, I hope, maybe it won't be that long, but.
I think the planning board might have set a new record last night.
Yeah, it was almost four and a half hours.
I, I do want to take one comment, we joke about the time, and, and just to comment on some of the public comment, you know, we are bound by open meeting law. So if we want to discuss things as a board, it has to be in these meetings. So the meetings are long because there's lots of things to discuss, and that's just the fact. So, I mean, we could adopt any law, nobody can speak more than a minute and a half, and you know what? You wouldn't get a whole lot done because it, some of it is in-depth and it takes time, and all of government takes time. I mean, so there is a certain component of it that is, that is unaddressable in any length. Now, some people certainly abuse it, I'm not for adopting limits to people on elected or appointed bodies to speak at their own meetings because that would defeat the purpose of them being on that board, but, you know, government takes time, that's all I can say, and sometimes at this time of year, a lot of time.
Any additional public comments?
Yes, I just want to say that, and I think I've signaled this since the first meeting I showed up at, which was the big one at the school. Now, there may be people that are equally as concerned, and I think there are, but you would be very hard-pressed to find somebody more in support of robust school funding than I. And I think I've signaled that, and I don't know who out in the public has, is, whose radio receiver is receiving the waves 180 degrees out of phase, from what I've been signaling. But a couple of realistic concerns, though, and these things do take time, these are not simple things. We can't just say, hey, what's so hard about an override? An override is a major question, and we as select board members, we have to be thinking, what is the impact on other people? There's a lot of things to think about, and I do have concerns, and I expressed this last week at the school committee meeting, that if, and if an override is put through in a sort of patchwork fashion to patch holes, and it's put through too hastily, will it be insufficient? Now, I'm inclined to support this, I mean, because it's here, it's in front of us, it, there's a need for it, but it is way less than perfect potentially. I think an override in general needs to be more carefully planned, and, and it certainly, if it, if the, if the, if the word is go, well, regardless of what we say, I mean, we can, we could, even if we didn't recommend approval, it's still on the warrant, so you still have to message this thing. So I, I, you know, I just, the concerns are, is it not sufficient enough? Does, and if it's, it's been so school-focused, does it, it doesn't account necessarily for town needs going into the future? So those are concerns that I have with, in favor, when I, a vote in favor, which I am inclined to do. But, but voting against it, of course, creates an immediate blow to the schools, as, as has been outlined, and that's not, not something I want to do either. I just wish there were more runway, there wasn't, and I just, I'm sure I'm not saying anything that people here aren't already thinking about, but it's just something I think we all need to think about. And also, and also that's another reason, I mean, I know there may be, out in the public, there may be frustration with a deferral on a decision until next week, but as you saw with all those other articles, we generally do not vote to put, to, on recommendations when we don't have numbers, even if we're pretty sure what those numbers are going to be. We got to have numbers. So that's, that's, that's the reason for the deferral. Secondly, just on a, on a lighter side, I just want to say that trash was never this complicated in North Jersey. Different families had different territories, and you got who you got, and that was it. We were next to Staten Island where I grew up, that's who we got, same, same family.
Always humorous, Lou. You know, you know, I want to also thank everyone for watching our meetings, you know, if I can, government service is always a sacrifice, you know, regardless as to whether or not people have kids, everyone has a life, everyone has other responsibilities and duties and responsibilities. And so being here for, for all members is a sacrifice, but I want to highlight that we have a lot of boards that don't meet at 7:00 PM and that aren't the select board. So, you know, we have a library that meets once a month, we have the cemetery commission that meets once a month, and they meet usually during the day. There's a lot of different boards that actually do meet during the day, and there are several boards that typically meet for 30 minutes or an hour. Typically in our town, I've found that the school committee, the planning board, and the select board have the longest meetings. School committee is covering a lot of ground, there's a lot of people who have to report. We know that the planning board is digging into bylaws, I was on the planning board. Our meetings were typically three and a half hours, plus the 12 hours on the weekends for the site walks and reviewing all the material. And being on the select board is just a wide breadth, you know, being in this role, as I'm sure all members know, that, you know, sometimes the meetings are the smallest part of the job, that it's a lot of time spent in conversations with a lot of people, it's a lot of other meetings that we have to attend or walk, but regardless, everyone is here for a sacrifice, and I definitely acknowledge that, you know, it is challenging, more challenging for parents of young kids, especially to be able to come out at night, be here at 7:00 PM, but I just want to encourage all to find a way. We know that, I've learned over the years that a lot of people watch these meetings, and I probably didn't know initially just how many people do watch these meetings, but a lot of people have them on in their house, they, they just hear them, a lot of people are in tune, and I know that a couple of years ago was really quiet, and we're like, how do we increase government participation? I think a couple of us were saying, when, when, when things are going wrong, people will let you know. And I think that when people want to see change, they want to see things improve, they, they come out and let us know. But ultimately, you know, to quote Gandhi, and I think then Martin Luther King, you know, we have to be the change we want to see in this world. You know, we all have to make sacrifices in many different ways, and so the life that we want to have, that better life, that we can see out on the horizon, you know, it's not something that we have to, that's just going to happen one day, we have to make life. You know, we make life good, my life is good because I made it good, and a lot of other people have helped me in my existence to get to where I'm at. So I, I comment on all this, just to note that everyone here makes a sacrifice. Our meetings do run long sometimes, and especially lately, but we're all making a sacrifice, and I want to thank all the members for their hard work. I know that to get to this point, it's been a lot of work. You know, Caesar being out and, you know, training on foot artillery and shooting big guns and watching school committee meetings and planning board meetings and coming to select board meetings, you know, I mean, we all find ways to incorporate it, and of course, the town manager, you know, while she's been our town manager, she's graduated one son from high school, and she has another kid that's still young, I mean, Heather is a mom. And something that we've said often is this job needs to be approachable to mothers, too, that it shouldn't just be a job for men, that, you know, typically in a household, women and men sometimes have different roles and different responsibilities. Every, every marriage, every relationship is different, but if you are a mom, regardless of whether or not you are the, the typical, or the default parent or the non-default parent, that all jobs, all roles need to be open to all people, no matter their walk of life. So I want to extend a huge thanks to the town manager, especially, I know how much work you've put in, you always do, but I really enjoy working with you, Heather. And I knew, you know, publicly, we never disagree, but you know, privately, you and I do disagree sometimes, but you are a true joy to work with, and I never question your commitment, ever. And I, I get just as offended when I see the comments that are targeted and directed towards you, they bother me because they undermine our government, they undermine, you know, what is reasonable, and you have consistently given us about 70-plus hours of week of work for the last, you know, what, five, six years at this, seven years at this point. Am I right, seven years?
Yeah.
Yep, and so over this time, I mean, it's been a huge sacrifice. I know that we've had conversations where we've said, Heather, take your vacation. And so I just want to thank the town manager and all members of all boards for their service to our community. Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there a movement to adjourn? I moved to adjourn.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the time is now 9:20 something, and the select board is adjourned.
9:20, 10.
10:20 something.[1793.86]